The August 16th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment, Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by John Robinson, Deputy City Manager.
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America, interior republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with Kletterwald USA at the Heritage Oak Parks site, and also to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of substantial exposure to litigation, and finally to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with all city bargaining units, and no action was taken on any of those items. So with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on the agenda, we are prohibited by state law from taking action or having a discussion about any issues that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that are available near the door, near Mr. Hosley, and turn them into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use that allows us to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all the comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that simply indicates which item the council is currently considering. We take the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the council questions and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional cards for that particular agenda item. So if you're here for Item 12 or for Item 18, just be sure to turn in the card prior to the conclusion of the staff report on that item. We also know that for some folks speaking in public, although everyone I see here is not in this category, for some folks, speaking in public can be nerve-wracking and a little uncomfortable, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or actually any applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. So with that, we have quite a few requests to speak under Item 1A this evening, and so we're going to begin with Dana Meegan. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak, and I trust, is this where you want us to come forward?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
It's been a while.
Thank you. It's been a while. Yes, it's been a while. I've attended many meetings, but took a hiatus, got busy with it for a while, but then took a little break, but good to see a lot of new faces here, so welcome, thank you for the opportunity. My family, obviously, has been here for a little while. We're four-generation family here in West Sacramento, and my spouse's family, same thing, four generations here in West Sacramento, and I hope that means, you know, I hope it's worth a little something. So we've been here a while, we understand our community, we understand our neighbors, and we like it here. We really like the way it is, and we'd like to kind of keep it that way. So that's one of the reasons a lot of members of the community met last night with the city, and graciously, city staff allowed us an opportunity to share with them our concerns, and they shared their project for this Linden Road Diet project that they started on last year or so. But I do have to share some of my concerns, and I do have a petition here that was hastily thrown together, and so I'll share that with you. We just had 24 hours, but we did get some good signatures on it that I do believe represents a better cross-section of the Linden Loop community than perhaps was surveyed last year or previously. One of the main, some of our concerns, and there's quite a few, and I honestly believe they're very legitimate, and this is from people who use these roads daily to get to work, to take their kids, children to school, get them back from school, pick them up, take them to practice, parent meetings, and you have it. You know how that goes. The residents and the neighbors of Linden Road respectfully request the city council to stop this project, the Linden Loop Road Diet, until further study and community concerns are resolved. And some of our concerns, I'll just bullet out real quick for you because I only got a couple of minutes, no, one minute. We are not adding any bike lanes. Let me say that again. This project does not add any bike lanes. We only reduce the width of existing lanes. We had beautiful bike lanes for years, we always have. Now they're less than half of what they were before, and they're far more dangerous. There are dangers of parallel parking in the middle of a major arterial thoroughfare. Concerns of impaired DUI drivers seeing parked cars as a traffic lane in the dark or fog. When you're putting vehicles in a major thoroughfare near the center of the roadway, it has got to be understood that that can present a real major hazard to somebody driving under the influence. There's no room now to safely exit a parked vehicle from the driver's side at Summerfield Park. You step directly into the traffic lane. We feel that our community was blindsided by the magnitude and implementation without notification, proper notice. It is evident, from the staff presentation we saw last night, that the actual impact of this project was disguised from the public, and we believe possibly even the council.
All right, Dan, I got to, we have to bring it to a close because we have several speakers, so we've hit the three-minute limit. I know you're joined by several of your colleagues.
Okay, and that statement was based on the props that we saw last night.
Dana, I understand.
Okay, thank you. May I present the petition to you?
Yes, for sure, to the clerk, and she will share it with the council, and I know there are others that will pick up where you left off as well, I'm guessing. So next is Karen Moore. Karen?
Well, Danny hit some key points, and I just want to...
Can I ask you one thing? There's a little button to your right, and if the microphone, it brings the podium down a little bit so that the microphone's right in your mouth. That way, folks who are watching at home...
So what do I do? Push this down?
That works too, actually.
I don't do this kind of stuff, so this is nerve-wracking, okay? So first of all...
You're among neighbors, welcome.
I feel like what Danny says, that we were not given the consideration or the respect of a letter in the mail stating what this project was going to be about to give us a heads-up in our own community. It is not, you have taken away an area where we were able to go with our children in a bike area that is no longer safe. I am now restricted to not even be able to take my vehicle up to the park to take my grandchildren, so I and my own neighbor will not be able to access the parking area that you have provided because my vehicle is too large. So I am now eliminated in my own neighborhood to access the parks and take my grandchildren there. If you continue on this project when social media and the amount of people that were there last night shows you that over 99% of the people are very upset about this and want this project stopped, then you're saying we have no voice in this community.
Thank you. And Steve Moore?
On that, what after her?
Somebody has to go after her, so.
(inaudible).
This is not the first time.
No, no. My name's Steve Moore, a lifetime resident of West Sacramento. I'm 60 years old, so born and raised here for 60 years. I worked with UPS, and I have a safe-driving record for driving with the package cars and on the highway for 35 years. I've been instructed how to identify problems on the roads and how to be able to avoid them before I kind of reach them. And when I saw this project going, quickly, red flags came up, reducing two lanes to one lane, put parallel parking next to the one lane. Red flags, everything came up in my head. The answers that we tried to get as a public, the staff wasn't able to give us because, for one, everything's on paper. Everything's done with a model, and actually, I don't think the model is correct. I'm proposing, and I've talked to the staff, if the council would look at it, as this is mainly by the elementary school. You already have one side painted. The public has already been notified because of today of what that it's currently going to be like. But the true, what you're going to get out of it is unless you do the other side and limit that side to the one lane and put parallel parking on that, you're not going to get a true image of what that cluster's going to be just in that one period of time. So what I propose is just do a practical deal for a week, cone it off. It doesn't, they're cones. Have a police officer park at the farthest parking areas of each side where they would enter the roads so that the people know that they can't cut in. They have to take the one lane, and then when they have to do their parallel parking like they're doing right now with two lanes, like I saw today, two cars almost got hit with two lanes. The person parallel parking was almost rear-ended by the car in the lane that's going to be eliminated right now. They were able to move over one lane to get into a lane of least resistance. That's going to be gone. Now you're going to have parallel parking, people are going to have to stop back into a spot with one lane of people trying to get to work, drop off kids, and everything else. What we've seen today was one side. It's like taking half a recipe and trying to throw it in and hope you came up with a good cake when you didn't even put nothing in it. If you want real answers, try to do something that's practical where you could actually see and get real answers. What is this going to do? How is this going to impact the people from Summerfield and Linden? They'll find out that they won't be able to make a U-turn, just the way you got the parking set up and the road set up. That turn, the cars won't be able to make it. They'll be pulling into zones that they're not supposed to be in. Talking to the staff, they said I have to bring it up to you, and that's the only thing I could alpha up is to say, get it, put it in, implement it before you put the lines in, and see what real-time answers are going to be. You may come out, and it may work out for you the best, or you might find out new answers that it's not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Kaufman? You can correct me when you come up.
No, you're right.
Oh, cool, all right.
So I'm kind of in the same group. First off, thank you for the time. What I've noticed since we've did this, and the whole idea about this is safety, so I'm with that, safety, slower speeds, but where I'm coming from, this is creating safety risks, and far worse safety risks than what we currently had before this. I'm noticing people going into the hashtag area to get around. I'm noticing people going into the turn lanes right in front of the school to get around other cars. So I guess the question that I'm asking is, is that the actions that we're really trying to promote here? Are we trying to get people to go into lanes that aren't supposed to be there right next to an elementary school to go around slower traffic? Everybody stays in their lane. Even with that, the lane is so narrow, that's already been mentioned, if there's any mistake, it's going to be an accident. If you are distracted for a second, you're going to hit one of these parallel parked cars, or you're going to go into a medium, or you're going to slam it to somebody in front of you. If you try to make a right-hand turn because that lane's empty, when you look in your mirrors, you're looking in that area. You're not looking at the bike lane. You're not looking at the pedestrians. So when you make that right-hand turn over what used to be that lane, it's really easy to hit somebody. We're creating big issues here. We're creating real safety concerns. I'm just hoping that somebody puts the project on hold, looks at this, listens to the community yesterday. We had, I want to say 60-plus people, one person's, 78. We had one person that said something positive. Everybody else was negative on this, everybody. So, I mean, I'm just asking, take the time, put it on hold, reevaluate this, listen to the community, get some feedback, and then move forward with it. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Teresa Parkinson?
My name's Teresa Parkinson. I've lived out off the Linden Loop since 1979. I went to the Road Diet meeting last night to find that none of us were properly notified in the beginning and all the safety issues, and they said they were going to bring it back to you guys, so I think I'm here just to make sure that happened. Last night, as I was at the meeting, I was told by someone else, they went down by the park where the soccer practice is, and they had to stop because all the parking was filled up, and the person in front of them stopped to let off their kids. That is a safety hazard. You've just lost another lane. So a lot of my issues are the same issues you didn't notify us, and Chris said he observed it, but I want to tell you, we live it. I'm retired, I go up and down Linden Loop four or five times a day, and I see it. I don't know when he observed it. And the other thing is, is we elected you to represent us, and that's what we're asking you to do. Like you said, there were 78 people at that meeting last night, and all but one was against it, so I think you really should listen to us. And then I heard on KCRA today at 4:00 that you guys are going to go ahead with it anyway, so I guess it really doesn't matter if we have an issue or not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Heidi West?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I may be the only person here tonight in support. Last night, there were actually several people who were at the meeting and who voiced their support for the project. Several of us were from the Coffee Berry and, I call them the native plant streets over on the north end of Linden. And so I just wanted to start by thanking the city and the staff who planned and implemented this project again. I think it's a good project. I've had an opportunity to utilize this kind of project in another area. I brought that up in the past. It's in Alameda on Shoreline, and it's been a very successful project. And certainly with these types of projects, there is an adjustment period, and what I'm finding is that we're making comments right now on a project that's partially implemented. It's not even fully implemented, so we're making judgments on something that's not completed for flow of traffic and pedestrians and bikers. So I think that's maybe a little unfair for the intent of the project and to the staff who planned it. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, I've provided both oral and written comments going back to last fall. I've been at all the meetings, and I, so I've given factual information, and the city staff have really worked with several of us and communicated throughout these nine months about making improvements to the project. So in showing up, they really were very interactive with us, and I really want to give a shout-out to them and let you know how much I appreciate the staff who worked on the project. And lastly, just steering away from the factual information, some of the perspective I give to the project and appreciate the safety measures is that, as a child, I actually witnessed another child, a friend of mine, getting hit by a car in an area where there were no controls. It was right in front of me. It happened in an instant. I chose to stand back, he chose to run across the street. And so, you know, I remember that car coming and trying to judge the speed and how far away it was, and if we could cross the street, and while children are very intuitive and intelligent, I just think that there's so much opportunity along that street where people speed for that kind of accident to happen, even though it has not happened yet. And that's why I really value this project, especially near Coffee Berry where I pull out. Those areas where people have to park now back away from those outlets, it's already made it safer to exit and to see bikers and other people coming and going. So with that, I'll close in my three minutes, and thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Beverly Ireland?
Someone to thank you for your time. My name is Beverly Ireland, and I was part of the majority last night that had great concerns over this project. It has been very discouraging for me to hear that you decided already that you're moving ahead on this project. There was a gentleman that provided research statistics last night that clearly indicated there are not the egregious safety factors that you have used to do this project. And I just wish you would understand that we that live there know those roads, and Linden is not unsafe.
Thank you. And Paulette Quan?
Well, Mayor, good to see you again. Thank you for the time. As you know, I've been here for many years on the issue of Linden Road, safety, lighting, accidents, and so on. I won't go any farther than that. Nothing has been done to make things better for us. I appreciate the staff today and last night, and all the meetings that have been announced. My husband and I have attended throughout the city. So it's not a staff problem. Some people don't get notice, but I agree with the letters should be out. I just am here to please ask to make sure that the biggest concern is the safety, the lighting, and the access for the people along Linden Loop. You've seen many accidents that people don't remember, and we live there and had a car go into the rocks and almost our fence, over the island several times, and into a home just in a matter of a block. Not talking about Jefferson Boulevard accident, that a young boy was lost, so that prompted the light at Jefferson and Linden to begin with. I just ask you to please consider adding more safety and more lighting, whether it's through accessing the park lighting, the school lighting, sharing expenses, whatever it takes to make Linden Loop a safe place for people to utilize. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Ramirez Palmer?
Anna Ramona Vensical, you're on deck, just a few...
And thank you, thank you for putting this at the beginning of your meeting and not at the end, not making us wait until the end. I've lived at the corner of Linden and Higgins for 37 years and have seen many changes and have lived longer in West Sacramento than this gentleman. I've been here 64 years, and have seen many changes, very many positive changes. Whether you're positive or negative on this project really depends on where you live. If you live down by South, by the Southport Elementary or in that little development, there were some very real safety problems, and you have addressed them, and thank you for doing that. There are different issues the farther down Linden you live. You have not addressed those. In fact, you have exacerbated some of those. On Higgins, when Southport Elementary opened, traffic shifted from Linden. If you don't have kids and you don't have to go drop people off, you go down Higgins instead of Linden. When the high school opened, more traffic on Higgins. And today, more than ever, traffic on Higgins Road in the morning. And I want to remind you, and I want it on the public record, that you have high school kids who are walking, skateboarding, and bicycling on Higgins Road headed toward the high school in the same lane of traffic as people who are commuting to work and irritated because they can't go down Linden Road. So those of us who live further down Linden are not so hot on this project. I also want to underscore what a gentleman said earlier, that you haven't added any bike lanes. My husband and I are retired, and we like to bike around the neighborhood. You've just cut my bike lane in half, and now you're making me ride along the gutter where all the debris accumulates, and when the weather gets a little more testy, it'll be slippery. You know, I'm an old lady, I can't afford to fall. You know, I'm not a hard body like our mayor.
Did you see the shoulder sling when I came in?
My point is that many of us ride bikes, many of us walk the neighborhood, and we have safety issues. We're some of the people that have been calling over the years about speeders on Linden Road. The speeders are not speeding at 8:00 in the morning. They're speeding at 11:30 and 12:00 at night. They're doing donuts at night. What you've done hasn't fixed that. The only thing that's going to fix that is law enforcement. You know, give out a few more tickets, you know, nail those kids that are doing donuts. But don't mess up. You know, you've had unintended consequences with this project. Don't create more problems by trying to address, I mean, you took a nuclear solution to something that needed a fly swatter. You know, fix the problems, don't make new ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is my first time addressing the city council.
In 64 years? That's crazy. All right, Ramona Vensical? And she'll be followed by Ann Jordan.
Hello, this is my first time here. I'm Ramona, and I've lived in this resident in West Sacramento over 50 years. I also live in Linden Road, but I live at the other side of Linden, on the east side by the river. So where I live is called Linden Acres. We have problems with speeding also. They're very, very bad. We have narrow roads. I have no sidewalks. My mailbox is, I have an old-school mailbox in our neighborhood, too. We literally have to walk up to the mail and put our mail in, and the roads are very narrow. I have just a small little space between the road and my mailbox to put my mail in, and that can be very dangerous because speeders don't care. They see me there and they still speed. As a matter of fact, one night, they took my mailbox off. They literally killed it, I call it, and it's got replaced. Also, too, I fear that when I get out of my driveway, I literally go into Linden, and that's kind of scary, too, because I'm having to look both ways really quick for the speeders. That's also very scary. I'm here to represent my neighbors that live in that area. In a conclusion, I'm hoping that we get a little of attention, maybe other solutions. I don't want to take away from the loop, but we also have issues, and can we also be assisted in some way with more maybe patrolling or radar bars or more, I don't know, just to avert people that we don't need to speak that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ann Jordan?
Hello, I'm Annie. I'm relatively new to West Sac, based on this. I live in the Fessin Hollow area, and I use both Linden and Higgins and the other side of Linden. I have people, friends, I go that path every day, many times a day. I can do it. I was caught by surprise with all the new lines, the new design, the new artwork, whatever you called it. People were not following it, plus they didn't understand what was being required of them. So clearly, the communication didn't happen. I was caught by surprise and confused, so I did what everybody could do. I came to this building. I asked, I was able to get a meeting, and that is why the group of people came forward last night. Over 20 different types of complaints came, and the thing that I learned, and I want you to know, is there's a lot more behind this. Somebody has to listen. There wasn't good communication, but now that they found out it was there, you see it on the road, there are a lot more issues than just what they said that the purpose of this was. Originally, I wanted to come tonight just to tell you thank you because they made that meeting possible. They did talk to us. But after that meeting, I have to say, I am very disappointed. They didn't listen. They were there, they took notes, they seemed reasonable, but by the time I got home, they had made their decision. I hadn't even gone over my notes. What consideration was made for the concerns that were there? I would recommend to you that there were unintended consequences, and there were some good outcomes that came from this, but you can't know them until you stop and look at it and figure out what you intended to do and what benefit, and how am I going to know if I got there? I've spent my career being project manager, accountability, performance management. It isn't happening here, and I've got to tell you, the responsibility now has to come back to you. I love the people in that department. I had a very good experience until I had to listen to the news, and what they said, it was already done. They could not have done due diligence on anything they said. They merely bowed their heads to us. There were some... merely bowed their heads to us. There were some comments that were good, so we do know their pockets, and we will make it available. My first request is to take us seriously. And then, secondly, I would like to see that some of the danger areas be identified immediately to be remediated. They have to get that middle lane out. Move it over pending whatever discussion or the alternatives that may come up this evening. But it is a very dangerous situation. Unmet needs came out. Things not even relevant to this, light swatter, everything. Somebody needs to have a good dialogue with the Linden Loop group, and they need to listen. The fact that so many people did not know, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so those are the, all the requests that we have to speak under item 1A. I don't know if Mr. City Manager or if any of the other staff have any additional information that you want to provide on this particular project?
I'm going to ask if our Public Works Director wanted to go over. He did prepare an update memo, and they did record a lot of concerns that were raised yesterday and have been received through phone calls. I know that they're working on that. Do you want to talk about that, Dana?
Yeah, let's just, we'll, we'll need to be, do it briefly. This is, so this is not an agenda item on tonight's agenda. We, we wouldn't, the council wouldn't not have an agenda item on a project that's currently under construction. All the final approvals were already provided. And we are, as noted at the beginning of the meeting, we're prohibited by state law from taking action or having a group discussion about items that are, that are not on our agenda. That is to protect the transparency of the process for the public. So that the public, if we were going to do something about a topic, they would know, and you would know, and would be able to come to the meeting. So there will be no action on any, on any of this issue tonight. So just to, just to level set our expectations. But if the Director of Public Works could provide some background on the, on the project and the context of the, the input that we heard this evening, that would be terrific.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, I was in attendance at the meeting last night, and we did get a lot of concerns. And some of those concerns will be addressed automatically when we complete the project about the signage and some delineation. Some of those concerns were not in our, we didn't know about it, so we took care of, we took note of that. We have a list of the concerns, and we are going through them and making sure that each of them are addressed. By the way, this morning, one of the big concerns that was brought up was the school drop-off and pickup zone. So some of my staff were there this morning and this afternoon. We didn't see any major traffic issues there, but we'll continue to monitor that. If we see any, any change in the pattern, we will address those also. So...
All right. And if you would mind, if the, as you've cataloged the, the major areas of concern and suggestion, and you're addressing those that you can, and those that are, you deemed, are been deemed appropriate, and those that you just can't, for whatever reason, if you could provide that background, you know, in the council, in the council memo, so we can keep, so we can keep track of the project as it, as it goes to completion. Thanks.
Yes, we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I do want to say, this is a, I know this has been a, a subject of, of a lot of conversation in the, in the community and in the neighborhood, in the city. We are at the stage already of construction of the project, which is, so there, there is no agenda item scheduled for the, there is no agenda item scheduled for, for this, for this, for this item. Once, once the project, this isn't a call-in response situation, so just asking you to respect the, the decorum of the chambers. This, this is a, this is a project that's very similar in a lot of ways to a project we undertook a decade ago in 2004, in my, in the neighborhood I was living in, which is the Westmore Oaks and State Streets neighborhood. At the time, Park Boulevard was a, a four-lane highway. It was the remnant of the, before Jefferson was Jefferson, Park Boulevard was Jefferson. And it was a four-lane highway. It was rapidly deteriorating, and we dealt with speeding issues for many, many, many years. We used to have a committee of the city council on traffic, and I was the chair of it when I first became a council member in 1996. So every single stop sign and stoplight and speed bump came, proposal came to that committee. And we tried many of those solutions on Park Boulevard and in other, other locations of the city to try to deal with the speeding. And stop signs, these are things, we're not the only city in the, in the country or in the world that is, is dealing, is dealing with, with traffic issues or with safety issues. So there's a lot, there's actually quite a bit of data and experience and research and knowledge from places all around the country, even in, in our own region, around how some of these things work. And we did learn a lot through our own experience here, when we first became a city, that stop signs, and the, the research shows us pretty clearly, stop signs and in four, in four-lane streets connecting to other streets of similar size are essentially totally ineffective, and in fact, can be counterproductive because they create a false sense of safety for pedestrians crossing. They don't look. They just see, they see striping, they see a crosswalk, they cross, but the cars don't pay attention to it. And the research is pretty strong on this. Same thing with, with signage. When I first came on Traffic Committee, I said, well, why don't we, why don't we make the speed limit on Park Boulevard 17 miles, so that it's an odd number that people won't have seen. And, and what we found was that works for about a week, then people figure out, they, then they don't look at the signs anymore. Or if we change the speed limit to make it go lower. We couldn't put a speed bump on Park Boulevard because it's, it's an arterial street that all the other parts of the neighborhood connect to, and we need our fire trucks and our ambulances and our police vehicles to be able to get down that, get down that street. So we have a policy of not putting speed bumps on, on collector and arterial streets in the city. What became clear was the only solutions on Park Boulevard in order to deal with the very real speeding issues. Oh, we even did, we, we did enhanced enforcement, and the courts in Yolo County said, we're not going to enforce your tickets, because most people are going faster than the speed limit. And when that is the case, a reasonable driver would go at that speed, and therefore, you have a speed trap. You, the city has not permitted to simply set the speed limit at whatever level it wants to. And so courts, our own courts have said, we will not, we will not enforce your tickets. We, you will have wasted a lot of staff resources and time and money issuing tickets that cannot be enforced if the speed limit is lower than it should be. So what we learned from that process was the only, the only solution was to deal with the geometry of Park Boulevard, that the human brain looking at a four-lane highway that was going down this street with no obstructions in the middle of it, nothing else there, caused people to simply, as a default, drive faster than the speed limit. We see the same thing on West Capital Avenue, which has been the area of the highest rate of traffic fatalities in the city, because the street is so wide, and because it is so unencumbered by anything but vehicles, that drivers simply don't pay attention to signs after a while. They don't pay, pay attention to anything else. And so Park Boulevard, the proposal was to remove one lane of traffic on each side of Park, install bike lanes off the side of the parking, and install inside the medians a couple of rest stops essentially at the, at the, at the, each of the intersections, plus the traffic circle, or as the neighborhood quickly called it, the peanut, on Park Boulevard. That was the first one of these projects that we did in, in the city. And I lived three blocks away from, from, from Park Boulevard at the time, and I believe the community meeting and all the signs that went up in the neighborhood would have indicated that probably 80, 85%, or maybe every single person in the neighborhood except for me was opposed to it. This was 2004. It was the first year that we had a directly elected mayor, and I remember this was the number one issue in the campaign, was this, was the peanut on Park Boulevard and these changes to Park Boulevard. The, that project proceeded to completion. It was the first time Park Boulevard had been resurfaced in quite a long time. And we still have some speeding issues on Park Boulevard, to be sure, but the impact in terms of pedestrian safety, the amount of bicycling, and on collisions has been dramatic as a result. And if we tried to put it back the way that it was in 2003, today, we would, we would face an uproar, for good reason, because we would be taking a street that is a challenge, but, but, but okay, and making it into a, into a very significant safety hazard. So for me, you know, I'm, I've entered this conversation with that, with that background in mind, because this is in a lot of ways very similar, except this project is, is using more of the 21st century engineering and traffic standards and the knowledge that has, that, that we and society and science has developed since, since 2004 in order to implement, implement this, and trying, and trying to find the right solutions. Because as, as Mrs. Quam said, we've, we've been grappling with this. And, and the easiest solutions, putting up a sign, or putting in a speed bump, or adding a stop sign, are also the, are also the least effective. They make us feel good as policymakers. Hey, look, I put up a stop sign, but they are largely ignored, and, and can in some cases reduce the actual level of safety. And so it is in some sense, somebody called it the nuclear option, but in some sense, the lessons from, from, from science are that, that you have to take a, you have to change the geometry of the street, and you have to, you have to change everything at once. Otherwise, drivers acclimate to those small changes. And given the park and the school, and the history of not, we don't have a lot of history of fatalities and other collisions, but we have plenty of reports and near misses, and, and also reports from parents that they just don't feel safe having their children walk or bike to school. And we have, and a proportion of kids that are walking and biking to school is dramatically lower than it was a generation ago, and it's lower than it is in other neighborhoods of Southport, where we don't have the Linden issue, including Bridgeway Island and, and Stone Gate. So that's how this project all came together, and the community process that, that happened in order for it to achieve council approval was as, as broad and open as possible. We, the city isn't Facebook. We don't, we cannot predict perfectly what each individual person's, what is going to be the issue that you care about the most. And at each, even tonight, we have, you know, 20, nearly 20 agenda items. And we try to guess which ones are going to be the most, the most, potentially the most controversial, which ones are going to be the ones that people will want to get in the mail. Because if we mail about every single one, nobody will read the mail from us any longer. So we try to guess, but we're not, we're not perfect in that, and it isn't common on all of us to, to, you know, pay attention to the extent that we can. But of course, no citizen can be expected to read 30, 20 agenda items a night either. So we're all trying to grapple with that together. Sometimes we get it right. Sometimes citizens get it right, and sometimes each of us get it wrong in, in that process. But once we're at the stage of construction, we don't have a lot of options, in part because the amount of dollars that the city has to implement bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and safety improvements in the city on a discretionary basis is, is essentially zero. So when folks say, why aren't you doing this in my neighborhood? It's because we don't have any money to do any of these kinds of changes anywhere in the city. The reason why this was possible was we competed for, and won, a pretty cutthroat competition in the region for, for the best bicycle and pedestrian safety projects, particularly that would have, would benefit children. We won nearly $600,000 in order to do that. So, but it's not money that we could say, you know what, we're going to spend it on Higgins instead, or in Linden Acres instead, or in Broad or Bright instead. It can only be spent on this project. And if we were to cease the project and send the money back, we wouldn't get that money again. We would, we wouldn't be picked next time, because we would have a black mark on us as somebody who gets, gets money awarded and then doesn't do what they say they're going to do. And because we've already spent most of the money actually implementing the project, we would have cost the taxpayers of the city a half a million dollars. So the challenges are, it's, I'm going through this long explication simply because I think it's important for folks, you're absolutely being heard. Our options at this stage, given the completion of, of an externally funded project, are, are pretty limited, if, if not zero, in, on this particular project. However, we're also not building, you know, massive amounts of concrete on this project. There's, you know, this, this is not being made out of, you know, out of irreversible material. As, as the project goes to completion, so that we can look at the data and the performance metrics and see what's really happening, then we, it, there's nothing in this project that could not potentially be undone at a, at a later date. Park Boulevard was the same way. The first, for the first several months, even Bill Kristof, my colleague on the city council, every time he and I would both be on Park Boulevard, he would cut me off at the turn onto Jefferson, because he, it took a couple of months for both of us to get used to the new geometry of the street. But now, in, like us and most everyone else in our neighborhood, we wouldn't change it back, even if, even if we could. So, it's a long ex, long discussion about a project that I know matters a lot to, to some folks. There, one lesson for me out of, out of this process is that there has been, you know, this, there's this tactical urbanism movement that has, is happening around the country, which is allowing for changes that are kind of like this in nature, but to happen on a, on a fast basis that's easily reversible. So, and the example is a, a city that allowed some folks in the neighborhood, when they wanted to create a protected bike lane, to just use toilet plungers. Don't go out and procure the, all the expensive dividers and everything. Just put the toilet plungers out on the bike lane and see if it makes a difference. Right? So, and, and one, maybe Dan, but somebody early on said, you know, why don't we try things a little bit first? And I think that what we're seeing in some other, in a few other places in the country, that there are models for that sort of approach. They have their own problem, they have their own challenges too, for sure. But, you know, as we, as we, as we try to look at approaches that allow us to, to test in advance. So, again, I know this is thoroughly unsatisfying for everyone on all sides of the, of the issue, but I think that's, that's kind of where we're at at this point. And as I said, tonight, we, even if we wanted to, the council is prohibited by law from taking the item up.
All right. So with that, we're going to proceed on to item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there reports or other communications this evening?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, the Port Commission met, and we approved a borrow material purchase agreement with Granite Construction Company for dredge spoils, which I learned tonight means dirt. Dredge spoil materials along the western edge of the Ship Channel navigation levee. And on August 1st, I participated in the West Sacramento National Net Out program, along with, with our mayor and Mayor Potem. And it was heartening to see so many neighborhoods participate this year. And I want to commend our police department, our fire department, and community volunteers for their efforts. So thank you, thank you for the, the work and to the neighbors who created the program. I also attended a presentation hosted by Sutter Health on August 8th to learn more about how they are partnering with Yolo County and other organizations to provide mental health services to our most vulnerable populations, including homeless individuals. Thanks.
Terrific. Thank you. Ms. Ledesma?
Thank you. This past Monday, the 14th, I attended the Yolo County Transportation District meeting. It was a pretty light agenda. This round of consequence was our approval of the district going forward on purchasing near-zeros natural gas engines that are going to be required by state government on new purchase delivered after next June. So we're getting a little bit of a head start on that, but there was some really robust conversation around that, about as the district goes forward, to start thinking about what the strategy will be for converting those fleets in future years, given the new requirements through CARB and everybody else that we, we will need to meet. We haven't really thought about that in a long-term way. This was a transaction we had planned, took the opportunity to, to purchase, and purchasing, I think it was eight new buses. We were going, two of those are going to be in the net zero, near-zero engine. So in the end, it was a good conversation to get, get the transit district going. We also, I wanted to bring attention, we had a brief update as, as under the director's report on the countywide capital improvement plan. I know there's some interest in this, seeing this progress. It's simply, it's, it's moved on, it hasn't moved on yet. It's coming back to us, I believe, at the end of September, October meeting, when we should see it again. They were going to go through a few more revisions to the draft that's out there. I think the city managers will be getting it soon. But they are starting to agree, or at least put in draft form, some of the approaches by way of the corridor approach, how to find commonalities in the, in the, in the county, as well as its vision and goals. In there, I think there is starting to be talk about whether we want to become a self-help county or not, which we knew would be part of the conversation eventually. But until we can kind of get further down the line, I think we'll, we'll have to address that. But they are making progress on it. They said, as they said they would. They wanted to get it done by the end of the year, and they're progressing. So I'll keep you updated on that, but that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Ms. Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick update. The Yolo County Children's Alliance recently gave out on August 11th, 500 backpacks with school supplies to local kids in the community in need. I was present, along with other volunteers and staff from the Yolo County Children's Alliance. It was a fantastic event. They do this annually, and there were lots of members of the community who came and benefited from the services offered by the organization. This Friday, the Yolo County Children's Alliance is also going to do a fundraiser over at Boca Vineyards at 5:00 PM. It is going to be music and food, and of course, wine, since it's at the vineyard. But the proceeds will benefit YCCA and give them the opportunity to reach out to members of our community who may not be able to start the school year with the amenities and the, the things that they need in order to succeed. So I do encourage everybody to go out and support, and there is a, I don't know if everybody in the audience and who are at home watching know, but 10:00 in the morning every Friday, there's a food distribution out in front of the building, and anybody is welcome to come and help. There's boxes of fresh produce that would otherwise not be accessible to some of those folks. So... So feel free to come on out and just check it out, or participate, or remind others in the community that they too can come and grab a bag of food. On the 7th of August, I met with the city school two-by-two along with Mayor Cabaldin. The also present was Washington Unified School Board trustee, Kobi Pazadi. The mayor presented on the Bloomberg Philanthropies Mayor's Challenge Grant to the group, and I'm sure Mr. Mayor, who has already spoken on it, may elaborate further on that. But also, the improvements to Bright Park and our shade structure, that is up and coming. I know that many of the folks in the community will be excited about that. We did have the great benefit of having the Disney Kaboom Park, and now we'll have the benefit of enjoying the park in shade. So that is a, an improvement that has been long awaited and quite welcome. Also, the, I'm sure Mr. City Manager might elaborate later, but we also discussed the Alcorn Playground. There was, the city received a grant award. Our city staff worked very hard to write an application to, for a PlayStation grant from the National Recreation and Park Association and the Walt Disney Company for improvements to Alcorn Park. And I am happy to hear and to relate to everyone that of the 250-plus applicants that applied for the grant program, West Sacramento was one of 25 to receive the grant. So yay for West Sacramento Parks, and what a great amenity for our children. Finally, I also wanted to add that the police, West Sac Police Department hosted a community meeting on August 9th, 2017, at Bright Cafe, multipurpose room off of Todd Hunter. I wanted to commend the police department and its leadership for its efforts to reach out to residents in West Sacramento and keep the dialogue rolling. I say this every meeting, I believe. There's a coffee with a cop, or summer night lights. The list is endless, and I know that it takes a lot of volunteer efforts, a lot of folks that may not be on the clock, that are coming out to support efforts like this. It's very proactive, and I know that the community came out and discussions are had, and I just want to appreciate publicly how much, you know, that matters to the community to have their voices heard. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem, Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 29th, on Saturday, I, along with 61 other volunteers, canvassed the north part of town mostly and the state streets on a connecting neighborhoods survey. And so this was Mark Zola with the city, BB Can, and it was part of the age-friendly community initiative. And it was basically to go door-to-door with about a five-minute survey to focus on internet use and transportation access. So I don't think we've got the results yet, but some of the questions were, you know, how is internet used? Is it used for school, shopping? If no, is there a cost barrier? Is it too complicated? How do you find information about West Sacramento? We went through the litany of the paper, newspaper friends and whatnot. What kind of community information do you want? Then we got into transportation. How do you normally get around? Is transportation a challenge in the home? And the questions would be, for example, you have kids in daycare, it's not on bike, or it's not safe on bike. And then we got into questions of, would you use Uber, taxis, or some of these other situations? And so it was, it was good because the, we had, anybody who's home, at least the folks that my team was going out with, they were glad to give this information. We did glean some interesting information. I have a copy, it's the Broadband Internet Connectivity and Digital Divide Survey. This is done by the California Emerging Technology Fund, which is an institute of governance there at University of Berkeley, California Berkeley. And what we found, we were asking people about internet usage, is most people have internet, but most, a good percentage of those, internet is only on the phone. And according to this study by the California Emerging Fund, there's about 18% of the population uses smartphone for internet connectivity. 69% use broadband, and 30% have no internet connectivity. So we really didn't find, at least in the areas that we walked, at least that I saw, that had no internet connectivity. But one of the issues that came out was, you know, there tends to be a learning issue. I don't know how to use it. You know, my husband operates the remote control, and I'm on the computer, and I don't know how to use that. So, you know, we had, kind of in that dialogue, so there's obviously some training that could be done to help people. The other issue I thought was interesting, we had some questions about how are you, are you pleased with your internet service? Who's your provider? And without getting into details, and generally, the biggest issue is that internet is bundled with TV, and expensive. And so you can't get internet without. It's not unbundled. So in other words, if you want internet, you have to pay $6, $80, $900 for TV that you may not want. And so people just don't do it. So I thought that was interesting because, you know, there could be an issue of unbundling that, or finding a way to, you know, take on internet. So in the event, I think it was, it was a good time, two hours walking, great, great community activity. And we're looking forward to the results of the survey, and I'm, I think the, oh, I wanted to also mention that 42 of the volunteers came from the LDS group. And LDS, you know, as you know, they participate in the helping hands of the park, Riverfront Park. And it was with an organization called Just Serve. And it's basically an organization where you can sign up, they go into communities, and a good community organizer. But 42 of the 62 volunteers came from that group. So it's really fortunate that we had that group out there. That's it.
Great. I just want to, we had a meeting of the Food and Ag Innovation Council for Greater Sacramento. I don't know who I represent. I know it isn't us, but I think all the other cities as well on that council. The, I think the most significant project that's emerging from that, from that work, and the city manager's more directly involved because he serves on the board of Greater Sacramento on our behalf, is Incubator Project with Bayer Crop Science. So that's, that's a big step forward, is that's emerging. Then in addition, council member Roscoe and I both participated in a branding session for the Kids Home Run Project. Council's previously approved that contract, so we were, we participated essentially in a larger focus group with the contractors on that, on that project as well. And then last, we are suspending, at least for 2018, our annual engagement with Lyle Sumac and Associates for the way that we've conducted our, the council retreat. And I've asked council member Sandine to essentially form, be a subcommittee with me and to work with the city manager and the assistant city manager on scoping the retreat. We made the determination based on having the retreat structure track with our two-year budget, essentially. So we've been strategic planning in that same way every single year, but then budgeting every, every two years. So this will get us on the same timeframe while allowing us to, at least potentially experiment with some other retreat formats and drive some other value out of that. So we're going to have a small ad hoc, one-time subcommittee for that purpose.
Right. Thank you. Item 1C then is appointments to boards and commissions. I just have one, which is to appoint Thomas Vu to a regular seat on the planning commission. Thomas is currently the alternate member of the planning commission. This doesn't solve any of Director Hamilton's problems that she's been beating up, the city manager's been beating me up on, but this is, this is step one of a process. So I'm appointing Thomas Vu to the planning commission and asking if there's a motion to approve the appointment.
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Sandine, and seconded by council member Roscoe. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 10. Are there any items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment?
Item 4, please.
I would like to ask staff to, on items 2 and 8, to make a brief presentation. These are pretty significant, they're technical but pretty significant policy issues with some long-term fiscal and regulatory consequences that will eventually come to us in the form of rate changes and other things that I think are important that the council, that we have before us collectively as well. So we would have items 2, 4, and 8. Why don't we begin with item 2, which is a status update on the Storm Drainage and Stormwater Master Plan update?
Mr. Mayor, we did receive a memo too, on item 2.
Yes. So we have a, yeah, there's a memo at our desk that summarizes the individual comments that, from the Environmental Utilities Commission. And just as an aside for the, for the council, the city clerk and I are working on some guidance to the commission, the commission chairs and vice chairs and the commission clerks. I've asked them orally in the orientation to, where possible, have the commissions provide us, the former planning commissioners know this well, but have the commissions provide us, this will sound wrong, but to provide coherent recommendations that are, that represent the views of the commission. Typically, what we get from, from the commissions other than the planning commission is the commission recommended approval of the item, and the following individual comments got made. But the commission is not itself, you know, determining which of those individual comments should be made. And sometimes the comments are conflicting with one another, and so we're, part of the guidance memo that the clerk and I are working on would more formally request from the chairs that they try to move their commission motions to encapsulate, encapsulate the recommendation as opposed to it simply being narrative feedback. So this is very helpful, so from Public Works, who I know prepared this on behalf of the Environmental Utilities Commission. This is very helpful to have this information, but it would be much more helpful if the commission were to, were to provide a, as I say, coherent set of what the commission's specifically recommending to us. So, all right. So yeah, if you could provide a basic summary on the, you don't need to cover the entire staff report, Wendy, but just to give the basics and maybe the highlights of what we might want to be the most plant flags on to, for future consideration.
Absolutely. So some of the main things with the stormwater and storm drainage master plan, one is that there is limited information about the storm drain system in the north area especially. In Southport, we have a better idea of what our system entails, mostly because a lot of the infrastructure has been installed within the last 20 years. And it has been under the Southport Drainage Master Plan that that work has accumulated. In the north area, it's never had a drainage master plan, and there are some areas where we're not even sure what our infrastructure entails. So a major part of the stormwater and storm drainage master plan includes field surveys in the north area of major infrastructure, city pump stations, canals, pipes, manholes, so that we can get a good model in order to inform us, do we have capacity? Are there infrastructure that needs repaired, upgraded, modified, so that we can provide the best system and reduce the possibility of flooding due to the internal drainage system? So that's one of the major components of the project. As the, as the staff report notes, there's a few little stumbling areas that we're working through with our consultant, including some concerns about imperviousness and tying that back to land use. And, and that can get a little complicated because it's a heavy influence to the models. And you don't want to overestimate or underestimate it. There's, there's big risks either way to do that. But to tie it back to land use when you don't exactly know what's going to develop, that's what we're trying to work through. That's one of the major items. We do want you to think about future funding. We know that there is very limited capacity for funding of storm drainage and stormwater facilities at the moment. We fully intend to come back and have a full discussion on that, but we just want to get you thinking ahead. We don't really have any results right at the moment. We are still completing surveys, and as soon as we have results and a good handle on what we're going to face, we will be back likely early 2018.
All right. Yeah. Ms. Ledesma?
Thank you. Just, thank you, Wendy. This is, this is one of those things we never really talk about, right? And when was the last time the master plan was updated?
The master plan for Southport, the drainage master plan was updated in 2001, but there have been, at times, technical memos that have updated small pieces of it. But it was updated comprehensively in 2001.
And has there been a big shift in, in either statewide or other policies that will affect in this, that 16-year span?
There has.
I'm trying to understand that, so will we get that background as well? And we don't have to do that here, but.
Yes. There has been some changes, especially with the city's MS4, the municipal storm, separate storm sewer system, that's the MS4 permit. That's one of the reasons why this go-around, one, we're including the north area, and two, we're also including stormwater requirements to the extent that they're related to drainage. So if it has to do with drain inlets or full trash capture devices that will affect the drainage system, we're going to incorporate it in the same master plan.
Okay. I'm looking forward to seeing it, and I do appreciate, thanks for the comments from the Environmental Utilities Commission on it, because there were some very helpful things in it. So, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is, I mean, stormwater is, it's an odd duck. I mean, we tend to loop it in with sewer and water, because it's in the utilities, it's in Public Works who's dealing with it, and planning has to plan for it and whatever. But it is fundamentally different in that we don't have a, we don't have a way to charge for it. And the way, stormwater, not completely, but is largely, is at least significantly a non-point source, and so we don't even know, we can't, you know, the drainage that goes into our, into our gutters or runs down our streets, we, there's no way for, well, I shouldn't say there's no way, the tech people are working on this. But it's not simple to know that, you know, that oil discharge that's coming into the stormwater system is coming from your driveway. We can't, and therefore, we can't assess the cost on. But the challenge is that the state and federal governments have said, "Well, we know that's a problem, and so you can't raise any, you can't charge a fee like you do for sewer and water, but we're just going to treat the whole city as the discharger, and you have to pay for it anyway." And so this is the fundamental challenge of stormwater, and, you know, we don't have general fund to cover all those costs, and, and so this is, this, it's one of, it's the least interesting of the utilities in some ways, but it's going to be really, really increasingly, you know, significant policy and fiscal challenge for us and for other cities across the state and the country. Maybe we should do, did you have a question on this as well? Maybe we should go to item 8 real, which could be even briefer, because it's essentially one, one element of this issue, the full capture, trash.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'll just give a very brief background on why we're here tonight on this item. So in 2015, the trash provisions were adopted by the State Water Resources Control Board, and we recently received a 13383 letter, which is a section of the Water Code, the Water Code, rather, that allows the water board to require the city and all other MS4 permotees to start implementing this trash capture program, or to at least comply with the trash provisions. So where we are right now is we have a deadline by September 1st of this year. We need to tell the water board which track selection we're choosing. So there's two options of compliance with this particular order.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
So what we're talking about here is that the empty bag of Doritos that makes its way into the gutter, or the extra, or the extra leaves that are in the, it's, or maybe it's not the leaves.
Not the leaves, yeah.
So it's that kind, when we're talking about, it's not the, it's not the refuse collection, it's trash that makes its way into our stormwater.
Right, yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so basically, they've determined that trash that enters the streets and the gutters, you know, litter like, you know, the chip bag, or, you know, cigarette butt, things of those nature, they have become a pollutant of concern. So they're an issue where they end up in our waters right US. So they're trying to regulate this discharge as a prohibited discharge, which is why we now have to deal with the trash capture systems. With regard to the tracks, we have either Track 1 or Track 2. Track 1 just means that in our priority land use areas, which is areas that they've determined are higher trash generators, so things like multifamily complexes, or high-density residential, excuse me, industrial, commercial, urban mixed use, and the transit areas are typically areas that generate a lot of trash. So they've said that those are your priority land use areas that you need to either implement all full capture units, which would be these screens or some other kind of trash capture down to 5 millimeters, or you can do what's called Track 2, which is a combination of those units and other controls. You can either do like increased street sweeping, or have an anti-litter campaign, or something like that. In doing initial evaluations of which track we should select, you know, there's assurances with Track 1 selection. You know, we understand that with Track 1, you install these, these units, and you are compliant. Track 2 has a lot of ambiguity. Track 2 has a lot of ambiguities, there's still some uncertainties on how we would demonstrate compliance, you know, there's some guidance from the State Water Board that's still kind of pending. So upon initial evaluation, that's what we're selecting, but I understand, obviously, there's some capital investments with that, and back to the Mayor's point, you know, we don't currently have a utility fund to pay for these things. So we're looking at having to invest several hundred thousand dollars in capital investment, and also several hundred thousand dollars a year in potential O&amp;M costs. So we do have the option. We could tell the Board on September 1st that we're choosing Track 1, but as we do some further analysis over this next 15 months before our next deadline of December 1st, we could determine that Track 2 may be a better option, and we can choose to go back, you know, to that option. Or we can start with starting to install some of these full capture units, which are required regardless of which track you choose, and then see if, you know, we come into some roadblocks, you know, down the years. We have 10 years to fully comply. And when we brought the item to the Commission, they did support staff's recommendation of selecting Track 1 at this time.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, then, item 4 is consideration of Resolution 17-63 approving the application for the outdoor environmental education facilities grant program for Heritage Oaks Park improvements. Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. I just really wanted to use the opportunity, I'm supportive of the request, there's Tracy. But I'm going to allow you the opportunity to, as this will gain some visibility in the coming months, as you continue to work towards the negotiations with the Ropes Program. If you can articulate for the public, kind of the next outreach sessions you're looking for, I know that's part of the program, I think it's just an important part, given our 1A topic, to make sure we are really out in front of these issues in the neighborhoods. They're aware they're coming, so thank you.
Certainly, yes. In conjunction with the lease negotiations for the Ropes course at our Heritage Oaks Park site, we're also exploring options that could potentially be funded with this grant opportunity provided by State Parks. The grant opportunity focuses on outdoor environmental education facilities, so improvements that could foster outdoor classrooms, any type of interpretive signage along nature trails on the site, which the site lends itself very well to those types of improvements. So we are having a meeting out in the neighborhood on August 25th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It will be located immediately adjacent to the sales office at Newport Meadows. There's a surface lot there. We'll be setting up some easy-ups and have information, not only on the Ropes course, which a lot of people in the neighborhood are interested to learn more about the components of that potential project, but also to learn about the grant opportunity and some of the features that we're considering right now as part of the application.
Terrific. So that's Friday, the?
25th.
25th, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on consent? None, is there a motion?
No.
All right, goodbye, Mayor Fred T. Johansson, seconded by Ms. Sandin. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, consent agenda is adopted. That brings us into item 11, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 17-7, amending the water and sewer connection fees. Mr. Blumberg.
Yes, in scheduling this item for you tonight, for your consideration tonight, we had intended to wrap up the update to the water and sewer master plan process and have you consider adjustments to the water and sewer connection fees, and then also to adopt the master plans, the documents themselves. The consultant needs more time to incorporate staff comments before we can bring you the final master plans for approval. So in scheduling the connection fee consideration, we had to put that as a public hearing item. So because it's been scheduled that way, we would request that you open the public hearing and then continue the hearing until your meeting of September 20th.
All right. With that, then we'll open the public hearing on item 11, and without objection, we'll continue the hearing to our meeting on Wednesday, September 20th, at the hour of 7:30 p.m. All right, that brings us into item 12, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 17-7, amending Titles 5, Business Licenses and Regulations, and 17 zoning of the Municipal Code relating to medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis land uses. Ms. Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor Cvalden, and members of the City Council. We're back before you this evening in a public hearing forum to consider the first reading of ordinance 17-7. This ordinance proposes amendments that will provide regulations for personal cultivation, dispensaries, retailers, micro businesses, testing, and deliveries. And we are also including edits that will address some of our existing cannabis definitions to align with the new Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which was finalized in late June 2017. The amendments that would address the other license types under the new state regulations, such as commercial cultivation, manufacturing, for art ordinance, bulk storage, distribution and transportation, those are tracking on their own paths with the project applications as they come forward. And there is one that will be coming after this one. So I will not spend a lot of time going over every single red line. I will note that there is a summary contained in Attachment 2, in a matrix format, that kind of outlines the, all the changes that are occurring. And then the red line is attached of the actual code for both Titles 5, 5.28, and, which is Business License and Regulations, as well as Title 17 zoning, which is where the majority of the amendments occur. And that's in Attachment 3. All of these amendments that we're proposing can be found to be exempt, not subject to SEQA, under a variety of sections of the SEQA guidelines, as well as in the newly enacted Business and Professions Code, Section 26,055-H. This item, all these amendments did go before the Planning Commission in a public hearing format on July 20th. The Planning Commission gave it very careful consideration. And they did approve or recommend that you adopt staff recommendations, so the majority of these amendments. They did include a few additional items, and those were, those are actually contained in Attachment 3, the red line. And it's on almost the second to the last page, or, yeah, the last page of that, highlighted in yellow. So they did add requirements that are more performance in nature to the cannabis laboratory materials testing facility section that's being recommended to be added. It mirrors many of the, or it mirrors the prior wholesale logistics, distribution, transportation requirements, requiring development agreement and a use permit, and would be conditionally permitted with those in the BP zone, the business park zone, and all of our M zones, which are our industrial zones. They wanted to add requirements for the facility to have ventilation and filtration systems to ensure that any cannabis products that were being tested, that the odors wouldn't emanate outside of the building. They also, under item E, 1E, under that same section, they did add language that they were concerned about persons under the age of 18 gaining access to the areas where cannabis might be stored or being tested. And so they did add a clause restricting those areas to persons under the age of 18. When I was preparing for tonight's meeting, I went back and was double-checking some of the recent state code, and I did come across a section that actually is more strict on age restrictions. So I will recommend that you strike E. Under state code, the Business and Professions Code 26,140 restricts persons under the age of 21 on any premises where there is adult use of marijuana or cannabis licenses. So it's definitely more restrictive. And then on medicinal use licenses, it's, anyone under the age of 18 cannot be on the premises at all. So the state code is more restrictive. So we would just strike this and allow state code to rule. And then they also added a requirement that rather than put restrictions, hard, fast restrictions, on distances from residential areas or other types of land uses, parks, things of that nature, they do know that that was one of the comments that had been brought up by the Council in prior discussions. They decided that rather than have some hard, fast ones, or geographic areas, that to allow the findings and the consideration under a use permit, where there is actually quite a bit of discretion whether or not it's essential or desirable, or if it would cause any harm to surrounding areas. So they put more aspirational language in for future, to make sure that both staff and future commissions pay attention to and look at as a part of the conditional use permit consideration, proximities to potentially sensitive land use areas or incompatible land use areas, and that's in F. So that covers the Planning Commission, with the exception of, they also discuss retail dispensaries and micro businesses. And there was not a majority, but at least a fair number of the Planning Commissioners who would like to take up consideration of potentially allowing retail dispensary or micro businesses with the same regulations as have been applied to the prior, or as are being considered with some of the other cannabis uses. So that would mean, they would mean the requirement for a use permit in certain zones, along with a development agreement. There was at least one that was not in favor of retail, and that was supportive of the current prohibition that is in place. There was also discussion on the retail with respect to maybe starting, for a starting point, to try it would be a non-storefront delivery only. And that is something that is allowed under the state law, under the retail licenses. So with that, I would be looking for direction on that. They did not go any further with that. Staff suggested that that needed much more coordination with the Police Department and the City Manager's Office and the Finance Division, as well as, we'd all like to have direction from you, if you would like us to start looking at that. And then, lastly, you're, at the prior meeting in June with you, there was a question as to whether a personal extraction was allowed under state law, and with further research on that, I was able to finally find a section that says no person shall do any of those things. So it's clearly, with respect to extraction, is meant to be at the commercial level under a manufacturing license. So with that, I will turn it back to the City Council for opening the public hearing and further consideration.
All right, thank you. Are there questions for staff at this time?
I have, actually. Charlene, thank you, sorry. With respect to the Planning Commission's recommendation, or at least partial Planning Commissioners being in support of a recommendation for retailers, micro business, or dispensaries, were any of them specific as to whether or not they recommended storefront retailers, or was this all non-storefront?
It was mixed. So there was some that said that they would like to consider or have the discussion about potentially storefront retailers or dispensaries, but with discretion. So they were clear on, they did not want to, they didn't, interested in deviating from having a use permit and a development agreement.
Currently, the way the code would read, we would not allow deliveries to a home in West Sacramento if the transaction began or within the city, correct?
Currently, we have a prohibition on retail, so the transaction couldn't start within our city. So any deliveries that would go to, for personal use, would be, and/or between businesses, those would originate outside of our city, and the amendments that we're proposing would allow that, but deliveries from a state licensed retail facility, but it would obviously be outside of our city, based on our current prohibition.
But if we had a retailer within the city, then that would, that prohibition would go away. Is that fair to say?
If we, yes, if we were to reverse the prohibition, then yes, a sale could originate and be delivered solely within our city.
Last, just for clarification, the aspirational language that some of the Planning Commissioners had recommended with respect to distances, is the state regulations, or the state requirements, are they more strict in that sense? Are they more specific?
The state act specifically calls out 600 feet from schools, other youth-type centers. They list a few things, but it's all centered around youth under the age of 18. But there's also provision that allows, if a city, a city can adopt a lesser radius. So we have gotten that clarified since the Planning Commission.
But at minimum, 600 feet per the state.
The state code is pointing to 600 feet, yes.
Thank you.
I would just like to add one more comment to clarify on the Planning Commission. With respect to retail, when they were having that discussion, they were citing the percentages of the voters that voted within our city with respect to the whole Proposition 64.
Yeah, for me, this is an example of why the Commission guidance is useful. I actually don't want to know, I want to know what the Commission is recommending to us, and the rest, if they can't reach a majority decision, then it's not, it's actually not relevant to us. We've appointed them as a body, just like we've been elected to make a collective decision, and we don't report back to the state or the federal government, well, we, you know, we're split, and we had this, somebody said this. So I know it's hard for folks to reach agreement, but we all have to do it in order to make those decisions.
On their side, I'm just curious, so on the E provision, around the 18 years of age, this is one of those areas where I think, I think, it drives me nuts, because this is a significant and growing industry in California, and we are, the other half of our brains is trying to figure out how to get more youth into apprenticeships and where jobs are being created. And here, we're talking, E is about, this section is about materials and testing areas. It's not about, it's not about use, it's about materials and testing. So if there was a Bear Crop Science equivalent that is simply doing research and testing on different sorts of products, you know, high school students who are studying chemistry, biology, and/or in career pathways in those sectors, need to be in those spaces, in the same way that they are in hospitals and in community clinics, working with, you know, much more powerful drugs. It's not, we're not doing them any favors by saying, stay away from research and testing. I get the point of, you know, if there's a retail distribution, or if there's a place where you go in order to engage in adult use, but that's not what, this section is not about that. It's about materials and testing. So I'm curious, when you mentioned the state law, you, the references you made in both cases were medicinal use or adult use.
Mm-hmm.
Does, do those provision, in that, in the state law, does the word, or your reference to use incorporate research and testing as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, the way it's called out in the section, it literally says, "Any A license shall not." And it says, "Allow any person under the age of 21 on its premises," or, number three, "Employ or retain persons under the age of 21." And then, when you drop down, it also says, "Notwithstanding above, any M license may." And the only way that an M license can allow is if any person, it can be 18 years of age of older who possess a valid government issued identification card with a valid physician's recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's a, I mean, it's a real, we're making progress on the hospital side, but, because it's such, the healthcare industry is a gigantic part of the economy here, but we cannot, we can't, through our internship programs in the city and elsewhere, place kids in some of these locations. Now we can. So a candy striper can have access to all the opioids that are, you know, on the table, with way less control than you would be able to have in a Bear Crop Science doing research, which is, I, for the. doing research, which is, I, for the opposite reason, I'm comfortable taking this language out because I think it's, it's not, it's not helpful, solving a problem that doesn't exist and it's preventing solving problems that do need our attention. Another question I had was on the, on these, on these particular consideration pieces, if there's an impact on the proposed facility, the, where we're allowing these, these uses to occur are supposed to not be proximate and in sensitive residential areas and neighborhoods in the first place, the zones that we've chosen. So under what conditions would these provisions actually mean something?
In, it's primarily, there's a couple areas where we have a pocket, and if you go to the map.
Yeah.
West end of West Capital, near Interstate 80 over crossing, there is a pocket of residential.
At Meadowdale?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it has some surrounding areas. Now, mind you, the freeway creates a barrier, so that was something that the planning commission looked at and said, you know, there, there is potential that a business could be within a certain distance of residential, but still have a fair barrier. And since these are, the businesses that have been coming before them are ones that are not open to the public, won't have any signage, so the barriers, they kind of recognized as being helpful in that way, to be able to allow them in, in an industrial zone even though there might be a pocket of residential nearby.
And what's our, for, the concentration filter is something we use for liquor stores. We, I've never ever seen it used in a regular commercial industrial facility, point of view, and in fact, it's the opposite, where we try to achieve, we try to, you know, find a cluster of biotech companies to all locate next to each other. Why would we, why would this be a negative in the, in the context of, again, remember reminding that we're not talking about dispensaries or retail operations, we're talking about manufacturing, distribution, logistics, research. Why, what, what would be the city's interest in avoiding a concentration?
The points that were raised at the planning commission, well, maybe I should be a little careful here.
Well, they formally do recommend this, so.
What, yeah. So points that have been raised and actually have been discussed by staff is whether or not there could be some social inequities, or that it could potentially, if there was to be a rise in criminal activity around these types of businesses, whether it would have an impact in, in that particular area if there was a concentration.
But don't, don't we reach that directly by the provisions in all, in all of this about criminal activity?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, all of the impacts and consequences are dealt with for themselves, and concentration, I just, I don't know, I, I mean, with the, with, with every other sector, we encourage them to congregate together and.
Right, I mean, there is that, but then the use permit gives us that flexibility to either be concerned about concentration if we think it is becoming an issue, or not. So right now, we're not really seeing that being an issue.
I guess my, my question was, how would we, if, if, if the way that it would express itself is through crime or noise or some other thing, all of which are directly regulated, then how, how would we, under what conditions would concentration itself be, you know, show itself to be a problem?
You raise a good point.
How long is due?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're right, I think we have tried to address all the things that could be of a concentration issue, and so maybe it's not an issue.
Yeah, I mean, in some sense, I mean, in some sense, the opposite could be true. We might want, we might prefer that every one of the cannabis oriented research and distribution and logistics and storage facilities were all in one location. Yeah. That might be actually a socially and civically desirable outcome, so, okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. All right, then with that, we'll open the public hearing. We do have a few requests to speak on this item, and the first is by Laura Mendez.
My name is Laura Mendez, and I am a resident of West Sacramento. I am a manager of a therapeutic alternative. We are a medical cannabis dispensary in East Sacramento. A therapeutic alternative has proven to be an asset to our community, providing lab-tested, properly packaged and labeled products, an educated and compassionate staff, and a variety of holistic health services. I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider regulating retail sales in West Sacramento. With robust regulations and proper oversight, a dispensary like a therapeutic alternative will bring a needed service to the citizens of West Sacramento, so I'd like to extend an invitation to you guys to come out and have a tour with us to see firsthand how we operate, and then you guys could ask any questions that you wish. And if you'd like to, you can look at us on our website at atherapeuticalternative.com, and there is a short video on there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Deanna Maria Garcia.
I love your little podium here, want to take advantage of that button there. Good evening, my name's Deanna Garcia. I'm in front of your city council and your mayor again tonight, asking for a medical cannabis storefront in the city of West Sacramento, not only one, but at least two or more. The reason why is the city of West Sacramento has a lot of residents that are going over the bridge to Sacramento, taking their tax dollars over there, and, you know, that's tax dollars that could stay here in the city of Sacramento or the city of West Sacramento. Dixon has placed a 15% tax on any cannabis goods sold there to help their budget, and I am a cannabis farmer in the city of Sacramento, and I invite you to a tour to come and see my indoor cultivation, and then also I give tours at a therapeutic alternative, a very well-rounded medical facility. Just safe access is, is all I can ask for, safe access for your residents, tax dollars for your city, and to help eliminate the black market and to lower the crime rate with the black market. And the regulations are coming, the state of California is putting them in place. I don't know why I sit here and write these notes for a half an hour, 45 minutes, I always go rambling on and on, and I don't end up reading anything I wrote down. But I can't say it enough, safe access, tax dollars, storefronts in West Sacramento, done correctly, vetted correctly with the application, application process being done correctly could really bring a good community together. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Richard Miller.
Good evening, Rich Miller, State Director for American Alliance for Medical Cannabis, a group of patients that are solely in the purpose of getting safe, affordable access. I've spoke before, Hugh, on a couple occasions in the past, and we've always asked for a dispensary to be in this area. The number one question I get from patients is how they get access. Now, the leading group right now coming for medical cannabis and understanding its medical benefits is the seniors, and we have a lot of seniors in this community, and I see seniors on a regular basis, and they all say it's very difficult to get to. They're dispensing areas to get their medicine, so it's most important as we move forward that we consider the compassion of the patients and make sure that they have access. Although, delivery services are good, they don't bring forward the proper education to understand the endocannabinoid system, CBD-1 receptors, CB2 receptors, and the benefits to the body along with those terpenes. This is most important because an educated dispensary could come into this community and can actually do good for the seniors as well as a high population of the citizens in this community. With the regulations coming forward, with testing, and you moving forward with distribution and manufacturing, I'm surprised that you're not coming forward with patients' access. So I am commending you for coming forward with distribution and manufacturing, but we must not leave the patient behind. We must consider their access and to the level of education that they do need. As far as your concerns about putting them in a concentrated area, I find that to be a very good suggestion. However, you will come with stumbling issues relating to zoning and being able to find those land that have big enough areas. Although it is beneficial to keep them together because it protects the security, because with an implemented security plan that does have cameras, you have better security operations going on several businesses than you would want standing by itself. In addition, in addition, you can list them to certain agencies within this community so they can have access to them. So I encourage you not only to move forward with manufacturing and distribution, but please do not leave the patients behind. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes a village to have compassion for the patients, the young, the old, and those most in need. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrew, same end, same end, you'll have to help me when you get up to the, none of my training in English or Spanish or French is helping me figure this, where the accents go.
Sir, I'm actually here representing high-end medical, so if we may move on, then I'll speak in relation to that.
On item 13, you mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Then Michael Brady.
13 as well.
13 as well, okay. All right, then that's all the requests we have to speak on, item 12, so we're going to close the public hearing and return to the council for further questions or discussion. Mr. LaDesmond.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the public that spoke, and thanks to staff for bringing this to us and doing a good job and with, working with the planning commission through this. I understand the mayor's concerns about the feedback, but it is helpful to hear what they do reach consensus on, and they, they made some, some recommendations. But overall, you know, we've seen this and where we're going with on zoning and how we're managing the ordinances going forward are consistent with what we've been talking about. I am a little concerned as well about the provisions that were added in by the commission, I think, because they do seem to have belts and suspenders around what can and can happen, and so I wouldn't, I just, I would put caution on, on those since we're fairly somewhat new into the industry, and as the mayor pointed out, rightly so, that as the market develops like any other manufacturer, they may, they may become clusters. We've seen it happen here already with food service, with breweries, with whatever else they find a cluster, and so those are consistent. But I think the key question around, I have for staff, is moving forward on this ordinance, there's also a question of, do we want to move forward on retail sales? But I see those as separate items, so that we would go forward with this zoning ordinance on, on distribution and manufacturing, is the suggestion, do we want to initiate with staff to move forward on reviewing retail storefront sales of cannabis?
Yeah.
Is that what's?
The staff recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation is to move forward with the ordinance 17-7 as it's redlined, which basically addresses personal cultivation, both indoor and outdoor, continues to prohibit retail dispensaries, and further adds in micro businesses, and then also adds in the section for testing and laboratory facilities. That's what the recommendation is. If the council wants to give us direction to start working on a consideration that might allow some sort of retail and, and take that before the planning commission and, and, and work on that, we can certainly do that. But we're not recommending that as a part of this tonight.
Yeah.
Only if you want to give us some direction, because that, that is going to require more coordination with the city manager's office, the police department, and the finance division as well.
Okay.
And the seventh planning commissioner, it sounds like.
Maybe.
I'm sorry?
A seventh planning commissioner.
Yeah, you know, and honestly, as, the more we go into this discussion around cannabis coming into the marketplace and to the, and cannabis coming into a city and how it's manufactured, how we treat it from a regulatory framework, it's, it's, it now seems, whereas it's interesting that, you know, seven years ago, my first meeting, I think, was metal cannabis, there was no, it was the wild frontier, there was no framework for how we would go about it, and our folks, just like the ones sitting here, were advocating for us to put up dispensaries, and we just didn't have any direction about how to go, go about it, and the times have changed, and those little seven years and voters have said that they want to see this through Prop 64. So I am interested in starting to explore that, I don't know what else, direction you need from me, other than I would worry about just, you know, coordinating the workflow and capacity issues that I know city staff has plenty to do, and we want to get this done this year to start meeting the initial threshold, but I'll let you and the city manager sort of kind of tease that if the rest of the council agrees. But I think it's time we go ahead and, and look at it, I just, it just seems, we're just, it just seems naive for us to kind of get this done and not eventually look into that. So that's my direction.
All right. Ms. Sende.
Ms. Hamilton, I just have a, because we're focused a bit on the highlighted additions of, of the proposed code, so, so if we didn't add in the section about considerations about the facility and sensitive uses, existing neighborhoods and, and concentration of uses in an area, if that weren't in there, that, could that not be, still be taken into consideration, or do all those things need to be stated?
No, those can still be taken into consideration. The use permit has.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, yeah, I think, I think it would be in my suggestion, we don't need that. I think the ventilation filtration system is probably, again, does that, would that need to be in this code for that to be required? Because then I would say, leave it in if it has, if it needs to, if it needs to show up here.
There's nothing in state code regarding, that I could find regarding ventilation.
So we would need that here.
So I think that is a good one that the planning commission added, and I would keep that.
Okay. Otherwise, I think, in terms of where we're, where we are now, probably echoing some of Mr. LaDesmond's comments, I think taking this up now makes sense with further consideration to other, other options after, after more work is done perhaps. So, but I think this coming to, tonight helps us move forward with some clarity. Thanks.
Mayor President, Johannesen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, on the, I think the clustering, I think that, that sounds attractive, but one of the things I'd like to take a look at is practically, I think, one of the comments was there may not be land in West Act to do that, but maybe some analysis of, like a cannabis district or something along that line that would basically have kind of this clustering effect, and it may have the advantage of, you know, more secure area, and there may be some synergies with the businesses in there in cooperation with security, we said, basically, a lot of the same concerns. And I do understand this issue of access and retail sales, and I'd like to take a look at that, but in conjunction with that, you know, both in terms of storefront or delivery service, but I'd also like to maybe get a map of retail in Sacramento, because, you know, one of the arguments is that it's, they have to go to Sacramento, well, you know, it's, it may be closer in Sacramento than we could do it in West Act, depending on where, where these things are going to go in. So that, that may not be an argument, and I'm not really moved about whether sales tax is here or there, it's, I don't think we should be balancing our budget on, on, on this particular thing. But, you know, certainly patient access, I think, is important, I think, you know, one of the comments on seniors and, and access there, I think, you know, is an important issue to me. But, you know, I want to make sure that access doesn't mean, they may already have access, it's just a question of transportation, getting there, and whether that's in West Act or Sacramento, it's, for me, it's not that, that big of an issue.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to speak briefly as to the concentration of facilities that do manufacturing, whatever purpose. I just, I, well, I appreciate the comments about the potential that the security systems might, you know, benefit public safety when they're, you know, in a conglomerate or in some type of concentration. I think that we've taken and made very clear to potential businesses that we don't want signage on the buildings, we don't want, and if in the case for distribution, we don't want signage on the vehicles, and I even have a personal issue with certain names that kind of give away to the community what that business is all about for public safety reasons. So the only concern I would have if we had a cannabis district, so to speak, is that then all of that kind of goes by the way. then all of that kind of goes by the wayside, and they're more of an identifiable type of compound within the city. And I don't want our city to have, well, I'm not in objection in any way to, you know, manufacturing, distribution. I do have a concern about the complexion of the city if you had necessarily a concentration or like this compound with all these security cameras and whatnot around. I would just like it to operate like a regular business in a nondescript way, business as usual, as opposed to having a blemish on the complexion of our city. That's just my comment.
All right, thank you. I, I, I wouldn't suggest that we encourage the clustering at this point. My only point was we, I don't want to, I don't want to put my foot on either the, the gas or the brake on this question through, through the ordinance, and, you know, there might be good, good, good conditions under which clustering makes sense, there might be good conditions under which we would not want to encourage that, but, but I think most likely it's going to be that the market will do that, and we should, just shouldn't be standing in the way or pushing that unnecessarily along. So I think if we remove E and F, we will, will accomplish, accomplish that from, from that. On the, so I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward with this in, in all respects. The retail issue, I am open to, to taking up. The question that I think a couple of members of the council have raised around just the, the staff allocation and the time, whether or not it's, whether or not is a priority for us to take on is a different question. So as a policy question, I'm open to considering the retail and, and other forms of access. Whether or not that rises to, please stop working on, you know, urban agriculture or some other, or, or mobility for seniors in the planning department, that's, I'm not prepared to say that tonight myself, so that, that, that needs to be kind of entered into the strategic planning conversations of the, and the, and the, and the management that you as the director and the city manager undertake in terms of the, how the priorities line up with the prior direction that we've already given in terms of what works and what we're hoping will be, emerge from, from your department. So I'm open to it, as I say, but I, but I wouldn't say drop everything and start working on that today, in part because, I mean, we just, the amount of resources we spent, you know, when Mr. Ledes, not because of him, but when Ms. Ledesma came on the council, we began working on the, on the medicinal issue, and we thought we were going to, you know, be good actors and try to get out their front, get that, get out there early and come up with a workable framework, was a, what's the tech, I think the technical planning term is, it was a cluster. I mean, it was, it was just such, it was so maddening working with advocates that I, it's part of me, like, I don't want to, I don't ever want to touch that again. And, and so although it sounds simple to take up the retail issue, if, if it's, if, you know, if there's any hint that it's going to be the same old, you know, we'll sue you if you don't do us everything we want, I just, I don't want to get into that. We, that was a completely unsatisfying and was a huge, huge, huge amount of your time, I know, as the director, but also the, the whole team and the council and the communities to process that. So I'd want to, I'd want to know before we enter that, that we were, that we were not going to be, become another, you know, symbolic war between advocates around, around our, our proper role in exercising ability to, to regulate that activity in our city, so. But having said that, I think that, you know, the, the work that, that led to this and the work of the planning commission is, is really solid, and I would support, with the removal of those, of the E and F in the highlighted sections, I'd be very supportive of moving this forward.
We'll make a motion with the interlineations to excise E and F.
All right. A motion on the item with the, with the, with that change, or?
Yes, second.
Okay, so it's been, the, the recommended action has been moved with the, with the elimination of E and F in that one section. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And the second reading and adoption of ordinance seventeen dash seven is tentatively scheduled for September sixth. All right, that brings us into item thirteen, which is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance seventeen dash twelve and seventeen dash thirteen regarding proposed amendments to Title Seventeen of the municipal code and a development agreement at thirty-nine-eleven West Capitol Avenue. Mr. Hardy.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The project tonight before you includes a request from High End Medical Products to operate a cannabis medical manufacturing facility at thirty-nine-eleven West Capitol Avenue in the limited industrial zoning district. The request comes along with two municipal code amendments, ordinance seventeen thirteen, which would amend the zoning ordinance to conditionally permit medical cannabis manufacturing facility, excuse me, permit cannabis manufacturing facility in the light, limited industrial zone. As previously discussed on the previous item, this one does include the provisions seventeen forty-two oh-one-oh E related to the age and F, the concentration, so if the council would like to strike those from this project as well, can certainly modify that as directed. It also includes ordinance seventeen twelve, which is a DA between the city and High End Medical, which is the DBA for the FFCP organization. On July twentieth, this project was reviewed by the planning commission, and the aforementioned ordinances were reviewed and approved, or excuse, recommended for city council approval. At that same hearing, the conditional use permit that is required by ordinance seventeen thirteen for cannabis medical, I mean cannabis manufacturing facility in the limited industrial was reviewed and approved by the planning commission. However, it was subject to the city council adoption and of ordinance seventeen thirteen. Some of the key deal points in the DA that were brought forth is deals with quarterly payments, deals with the development agreement, and the use permit must be valid at all times. If either one of them is not, it's null and void. The applicant is required to follow all state licensing requirements, and last but not least, is required to do a security plan that is subject to review and approval by city staff in moving forward. Therefore, staff is recommending the wave, the first reading by title ordinance, title only, ordinance seventeen thirteen, amending the zoning ordinance that would be related to cannabis manufacturing facilities in the limited industrial zoning district, and ordinance seventeen twelve, the development agreement between the city and High End Medical Products. This concludes my presentation. I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Justin, when this, when the, the work on the development agreement began, did this company have a different name?
When we first, the project was applied, the, the name that was actually registered by the state, the city attorney actually identified that the name that was registered by the state was a name that they were, that was under. The application was, come forth with High End Medical Collective originally, and then it was changed to High End Medical Products. And so that's, High End Medical Products is a DBA for the FFCP organization.
Okay. So it had, all the, 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 at the initial authorization to proceed with negotiation of the development agreement, there was, it was with High End Medical at the time, or?
Correct. It is the same organization, the same name, but there was no name change along the, along the way?
Mr. Mayor, initially, sorry, it's me over here. Hiding. Initially, the proposal came to us through CBG Therapeutics, and then subsequently they changed, ended up changing their name, but it's the same proposal that was carried forward, just under a different name.
All right. Let me guess, part, I'm going to ask you as it gets to the, to the, to the issue that Ms. Roscoe raised in item twelve around, around, around the collective efforts of us and, both us and the community of manufacturers and distributors to, to maintain a, the lowest profile in the, in the space. So I was curious about the, the last time I'd seen this, I think it was CBG Therapeutics. So, okay, are there, there questions or comments at this time? All right, then, we're going to open the public hearing. Thanks. Open the public hearing on item thirteen. We have a couple of requests to speak on this item. Andrew, you're up first.
Sir, I appreciate the opportunity, but Officer, first.
You are the most problematic person the whole evening. I don't know why you even keep calling on you. You don't ever want to talk. You're going to the back of the line now. All right, Ms. Graves?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Erica Graves. I am the owner of this company, and we, we've come a long way. It's been a process, hence the changes, and it's, you know, it's a fluid process. So here we are. We thank you for having us here and, and listening to our project. Our team is here. Andrew, who will come up, he is a member of our team and probably can best speak to you as to...
I've tried.
He doesn't want to talk to you, no.
Can you, while you're here, how do you pronounce the last name?
Simon.
Simon, thanks, okay.
So we have, our main core values of this is safety, community safety, our safety of our employees, quality, that we are producing quality products for patients as well as consistency, so that people know that they're getting the same thing every time. So we have developed standard operating procedures. We've developed a whole team of people to specialize each and every part of the process to make sure that we fulfill those goals and are responsible and good actors in the community. So with that, I can have Andrew come up, or if you have any questions, he can speak to that. Yeah, thank you.
Actually, I do have a question.
All right, Ms. Roscoe, yes.
I'm going to just follow up Mr. Mayor's question just a moment ago. Why the name change from CBG to High End?
It's, you know, it's funny, that, that's probably not the name. It's one of the DBAs of the collective, and it just started as that, and so we figured, you know, multiple businesses or corporations can have different DBAs. It wasn't a name we actually selected, and it's not a name that we want to go through with. So we will probably file a DBA with a different name. Like I said, there's, it's been a fluid process, and we're all kind of learning the ropes together, and we have really fine-tuned everything at this point. It's been, you know, quite the process, and so, you know, every day we're brainstorming and while we have the build-out and those things, we're going to talk about kind of that more inconspicuous name, more professional, more...
For the purpose of the credibility of the, the business.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And, and just for the, the sake of the folks that are out in the community watching this on television, could you say a little bit more about your business specifically? I understand it's a manufacturing business. Do you do any retail work or distribution of any sort?
So, yes, volatile manufacturing. We do intend to go forward with an amendment, if things go well, to distribute. The reason for that is because, after speaking with police and fire and having them out to our facility, we, and discussing the process with them, it's a lot safer to transport and go between different vendors as, when bringing in source material as well as taking out final product. And so it's a lot safer to have that in-house, it's more controlled, it's, we, we control it, we regulate it, we vet the employee, we, they follow our standard operating procedures for that, and so that is definitely an amendment that we will want to pursue in the future.
Will you pursue in retail?
You know, that hasn't been our model right now. It's certainly something that if, you know, we see you as stakeholders in our business, and if we are, you know, it's certainly something, you know, vertical integration from a business standpoint is absolutely something that we would want to do, you know, that's just smart business. And so if that is the will of the, of city council and the, the people of this city, absolutely. We've, we've been really blown away as a team with this city and how responsible they are, how thorough they are to both sides. You know, it's, it's a controversial issue, and, and so we've been, we've been really impressed, and we're excited to be, be here. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Michael Brady.
I'll do it first.
All right, now it's your turn, Michael, you're up. Come on up, Michael. Don't be shy, you share one of our commissions.
Michael Brady with Duberry Architects. We're a member of the team, working with High End Medical Collective, and have, I stand available to ask, answer any questions regarding the, the interior operations and site operations of the project. Any questions?
Well done. It seems like no, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Andrew, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. I've been very eager to speak this evening and may have come and spoke out of turn, so please excuse my manners. My name is Andrew Seaman. I'm here on behalf of High End Medical. My consulting group is Orion GMP Solutions, who are a pharmaceutical process engineering firm out of Denver, Colorado. We are here to assist High End Medical in the implementation of pharmaceutical good manufacturing practices under focused standards. Focused standards stand for the foundation of cannabis unified standards, and those are almost internationally accepted good manufacturing standards for cannabis production, whether it be cultivation or it be extractions. There are also guidelines for retail operations and serve many governments as the regulatory foundation from which they are operating and regulating the cannabis industry. Here, I have an exceptional team behind me with operational experience in making safe products. Safe products actually mean quite a bit to me. In two thousand and two, I joined the United States Marine Corps and got out in two thousand and six, and I was very fortunate to have residency in the state of California and access to cannabis for treating myself as well as other veterans as a caretaker. So safe access actually means quite a bit to me, and I really do appreciate the other voices we heard on access for retail. Of course, that is a separate issue. The team that we have behind us, we have Zachary, who is going to be the operations manager, we have Clayton, who will be the head of distillation, and we have Garin, who will be the head of extractions, as well as Mr. Casey Brown, and we have our general contractor, Lynn, and of course, Michael. Together, we have put together a project management plan to deploy this facility build-out and to work in the guidelines of the city of West Sacramento and the state of California to comply with all safety codes, whether those be public California building codes or fire protection codes, as well as national fire protection codes. Safety is what we have optimized both for patients as well as the operation of the facility. In terms of safety towards patients, there is much to consider in regards to good manufacturing practices and how that ensures patient safety. Without giving a long history of it, the FDA governs good manufacturing practices to public, protect public health. Children literally died before these types of guidelines were in place, and these are the guidelines we use to manufacture with. It is a matter of quality management. I sit as the chairman of the ASTMD thirty-seven Cannabis Standards Committee, which is an international body setting the standards for cannabis manufacturing, and it is those focused standards that are filling into that. So overall, our operational management will be guided through pharmaceutical manufacturing principles as well as quality management systems. I'd be happy to take any questions in regards to what I've spoken about this evening or the project.
Any questions? Ms. Roscoe?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell me a little bit about the products that you're creating?
Yes, ma'am. Primarily in extraction laboratory, we're taking raw materials, which are cannabis flowers or trim, and then we're exposing them to a hydrocarbon solvent, which concentrates them. It takes away a lot of the plant matter and rather leaves an extract, as we would with active pharmaceutical ingredients that are then compounded into drugs. So it's very similar to that. In terms of actual consumer products, there will be vaporizer cartridges, as well as different raw extract forms, which may be vaporized, as well as products that can be consumed, which would include gelatin capsules and edibles.
Edibles like?
They can be put into a number of forms, but I would consider, for example, gelatin soft capsules to be an edible. We do not have an entire product line worked out yet, however, the primary activities will be extractions that lead to the raw materials, of which we can find the right products that meet the needs of medical patients.
So this isn't like bags of lea- So this isn't like bags of leaves that people can roll into a joint?
No, ma'am. I can assure you, this is about as far as it gets from that.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Sandin had a question, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I have a question actually of our fire department, but can I do that now? Or you, or maybe after, yeah, thank you.
The conclusion of the hearing? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, those are all the requests to speak under item 13, so we'll close the public hearing. I'm sure the council, Ms. Sandin, your question to staff?
Yeah, so, so related to the adjacency to the freeway and the kind of manufacturing that's happening, I, I made sure that I saw that police and fire reviewed the, the project, but are there any concerns about the kind of manufacturing that's, that's, because it's right next to the freeway of any, anything flammable, exploding, or any other concerns we might have in that location?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brian Johnson, fire marshal for the fire department. As they explain, I, did you guys see using volatile butane extraction, which is, which is a flammable gas and with a potential for explosion? Before any project is approved, they have to be, the project has to be reviewed, set of plans will be submitted. We'll look at all the equipment, as is, it has to meet fire code standards, including a listing, which means a third-party organization would come in and take a look at the equipment to assure that it's safe to function if it's not, if it isn't submitted as approved. So before we allow its use, we'll make sure that it's as safe as possible, but I can't say that accidents don't happen, because they do.
All right, thank you. Other questions or discussion? Mayor Protem Johansson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, maybe just to explore council member Roscoe's concern about the profile, this is a DA that we're working on now. I don't know if this would be the appropriate setting, but to what authority we have to deal with naming? Because we do, I know there's difference between a manufacturing facility and a retail sale, obviously branding is, is different, different considerations, but I wouldn't want to be in a situation where we basically have a name that's bootstrapped into retail at some point in the future that maybe this kind of gets out of control.
Well, it's two different aspects to that. One is the kind of operations that are permitted under the development agreement and the conditional use permit, they would not allow retail. So in the event the city were to revisit that and allow retail and they wanted to engage in retail sales, that would require a revision to their conditional use permit and the development agreement. In terms of naming, we are entering into an agreement with a particular named entity that is identified with a DBA. We don't typically, the development has, the development agreement has to be entered into with an entity that has a legal interest in real property, so from the development agreement standpoint, that's really the focus. We, they certainly could, as part of a development agreement, agree to use a particular name in their advertising or in their, their business name. We haven't typically done that, but we do have the restriction on signage to limit it to this, to the number and to the name as well, trying to remember. Does it, to, yeah, just the address. So right now, their exterior signage would be limited to their, to the address, not the name of the business. So I'm not sure if that answers the question.
Yeah, it kind of gives, gives some leeway. This is the first reading of this, isn't it, so?
It is. If you wanted to make a change to the development agreement, we would want some fairly clear direction so that we could move it forward to a second reading.
All right, well, I mean, it's not, I'm not going to fall in the sword on this one, but if it's, you know, any, what, balance of council wants to maybe take a look at that, I'd certainly support it, but again, it's not huge, a huge issue to me.
Comments? Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good point, because as we go into these agreements, what matters to me is we, that we're making the agreement with a legal entity that is formed and we know the principles and they're signing this. So if, if, I, I get the concern, I just worry about the, the, the further we get into those specifics with these types of development agreements, we just go down a rabbit's hole with those, I worry about it. I certainly get the, the concern, and I, I heard principal owner, Erica, is that right? State, she's hearing this loud and clear about the inconspicuous nature of a naming can, DBA that we're looking for. And I do believe we're, as we go into these agreements, they do become partners and that means they understand our values as a community, that we are good to work with, and we, we tend to be sort of a no-nonsense entity that furthers kind of, if you have, share our values towards, towards the community, we're ready to move forward, but that trust can be broken really quick if, if, if these types of activities of naming conventions that maybe don't go to it, to what we, the spirit and, and the actual what's written here in, in this development agreement. This is not a retail operation, I clearly understand what you're going to be manufacturing there and its uses, how, how, what the use cases might be from your markets, but I, I just really want to emphasize that as we go through and finalize this agreement, that we make sure that the legal entity is, is the one that, you know, again, that, in the, in the, in the, in their prospectus here that they provided, it's high-end, it's high-end, they're going to change their name to a DBA, something to be, DBA to be formed, whatever it is. We just need to be kind of mindful of, of what precedent you're, or what path you're, you're bringing. I'm supportive of this, and I'm, been the one that's probably been, as Ms. Roscoe has been, we're fairly guarded about our, dipping our toes into this. So I'm really putting a lot of, heavy emphasis with our legal team and city manager's office in getting this development agreement right. It looks to be right, we capture, we're, we're very clear on, on our expectation once you enter our, our community, so. I, I get your concern, I just worry about the more and more we try to legislate, the more and more sort of risk we run on, in other areas about it, so. And I've seen that happen before, so.
I might suggest one thing. We could take a look at taking the DBA off of the D, off of the development agreement. I was trying to remember, I think I put it on there originally because their lease is in the name High End Medical Collective, or High End Medical Products. If the lease is with the parent organization, then there's not really a reason why the development agreement needs to, to refer specifically to the DBA name. We're just trying to maintain that linkage between an interest in real property and the entity that we have a development agreement with. So we need to make sure that whatever the entity is that is on the lease is referred to in the development agreement.
I understand.
Right, I mean, there's, there's the question of whether or not the development agreement could try to direct the name in some way, but the development agreement's a purely discretionary act. So we could simply, as a matter of council policy, we're not interested in entering into a development agreement with any entity that is in this, you know, in, in, is inconsistent in its marketing, including its name, with what we are trying to accomplish in our, in our inconspicuous signage and our other policies. That's, that would not be inappropriate. This, this, I asked about it because it's not just the name, other things have changed in this proposal since I first, I first supported doing the green light, when it was principally, it was the concentration, the manufacturing of concentrate, but the addition of edibles and other elements are, are new. And what we're, although I am actually personally supportive of going all the way on these things, this is a community journey, it's a council journey, and, and so sort of making light of the research in manufacturing and scientific product, you know, the products that we were originally talking, you know, talking about with this name is, I mean, I, without regard to whether there's a legal solution here or not, but I get the, I get the concern about it, and the fact that, you know, the website's going to say it's high, it's, it's not, it's not conveying at all what, at least we were thinking, at least what I was, what I understood when we began. And then the move into edibles and other things beyond the, beyond the manufacturing process just underscores that, so that's, I get the discomfort too, I, I share it. I would not want to have the development agreement, you know, specify the name has to be changed, or specify what the name has to be, or that we have a set of policies, or that a commission has to review the name, but, you know, the pure, the pure discretionary choice to whether or not to enter into a development agreement, I do think is, I mean, that is properly before us, so. I think I jumped in when you were going to say something about it.
I was just going to say exactly that, thank you. And I, you know, I'm not in the business of regulating names here. Of course, it was a red light, and I, and to council member Ledesma's comments, I mean, I, I think we've traveled pretty far from where we initially were anchored with respect to considering businesses such as, as High End. However, I did notice the name, and, and I think it'd be in the interest of High End or whatever name the business has, you know, to, to remain as nondescript and float under the radar for the purposes of safety and preserving the, the business intact and drawing as little attention to what the operation's all about, and so that's just, it was just a comment, I wanted to put it out there that, you know, I, I do support this effort, and, you know, I hope that, you know, that the, I hope that the operation goes as smoothly as, as, as being presented, but it's just a consideration that I had, and I'm, I'm appreciative that you're open to that consideration.
All right, so we have the item before us, it would be up for second reading if we were to adopt it on September, it would be scheduled for September 6th. Our actions tonight are without prejudice to what we might do at the next meeting, so, you know, as your, as, I mean, if the, if the company were to have a different DBA or to change its lease name or what have you, I don't know if that triggers a different-
No, I don't, that would not in my mind be a problem.
That would trigger the second reading, so if that were to be signaled or accomplished by that meeting, then that would, and the concerns that have been raised by, by Ms. Roscoe in particular, but others as well, could be resolved by that time, but at least to, to move this forward in this form and the content of it with, I would just, you know, as Mr. Hardy said, with the changes to conform to what we did on item 12 in terms of the planning commission language, makes sense.
Anything for a motion?
Yes, Mr. Ledesma.
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay, with the ENF?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Ms. Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, thank you. That brings us to item 14, which is a workshop on a potential policy framework for the expenditure of Measure E funds. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening. At the council's meeting of June 28th, staff set forth a list of proposed allocations for Measure E funds, and at the time, the council expressed a preference that a policy framework be put in place before the council considered those specific allocations. Staff has met in the meantime with the mayor and council member Ledesma, who were appointed at that meeting as an ad hoc committee to look at the issue of a policy framework, and based on the feedback that we've received from the mayor and council member Ledesma, as well as a copious review of council meeting tapes from meetings where Measure E was discussed, we believe that we've come up with and identified a set of principles that are embedded in the council's previous discussions that could form the basis of a policy framework around Measure E. So this report is intended to facilitate a council discussion of those ideas with the intent that staff will take the council's comments and continue working with the ad hoc group to develop a policy framework that would be brought back to the council at a future date for your consideration. To prime the pump for the discussion this evening, I'd like to summarize our understanding of the council policy direction that's been given to date, which will let the staff know whether we're on, on point in terms of tracking with what the council wants to get done on this issue, and let, alert us to any ideas that we might have missed. I'll start with some overarching ideas that we've heard and work towards more specific concepts, and most of this material summarized in attachment one of your staff report. So at the, at the broadest level, the council has signaled pretty clearly that it wants Measure E to be impactful and consistent with the will of the voters who approve the measure. And it should be, also be noted that at the meeting of the 28th, the council suggested breaking Measure E projects into three categories, one being capital accelerator, which as the name implies, would mean taking capital projects and helping them move faster with Measure E funds, programmatic, which would be used to expand city programs to achieve specific outcomes, and venture, which would be exploring new techniques and technologies to achieve specific outcomes using Measure E funds. The council has articulated some overarching principles during these meetings that would apply to all the categories, and those would include to supplement, rather than supplant, existing city funds with Measure E funds, to track and report on performance annually, to balance the flexibility to pursue opportunities with stability for project funding in allocating Measure E, to use a council allocated funding process to maximize the positive community impact of Measure E investments, to publicly acknowledge Measure E accomplishments through signage and other means, the idea that council-approved funding amounts that have been discussed previously are upper bounds and not spending targets for staff, the idea that council can transfer funds within and across categories to maximize impact, and the idea that geographic equity of Measure E allocation should be tracked over time where it's appropriate. And continuing to get a little bit more specific, these principles also suggest several potential budget policies that the council could consider that might address the, the priorities, so those would include maintaining awareness and control of staff expenses on Measure E projects, maximizing the efficiency of Measure E funds by leveraging outside funds with Measure E, using Measure E to accomplish projects that couldn't otherwise have been undertaken with existing funding sources, being transparent about the opportunity costs and alternative uses of Measure E funds, and managing risk reward and time value of money considerations in the use of Measure E funds. So the council provided lots of, lots of materials, so we look forward to your discussion this evening and continued discussion so that we can bring back to you at a future date a policy document for your consideration. That's the end of my presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robinson, and I'm going to turn to Mr. Ledesma on behalf of the subcommittee, but I, I first, since he'll say the same thing, but I want to say this, to acknowledge the, the really deep and solid staff work that, Mr. Robinson, I don't know if lead is the right word, but the team of, the team of, of key staff that have worked to try to build this and flesh this out. The staff was working on this at the same time that our subcommittee had been meeting, and when we brought it all together, we realized we had both, you know, essentially produced the same, the same outcome, except they did it better, so really, it was really solid work, so for some very complicated, you know, a, a set of, there's a lot of things going on in this at one time, and, and we've given a lot of feedback, as Mr. Robinson has indicated, so. Mr. Ledesma.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will too commend John and the team for a terrific job on articulating exactly what our, our intention was with this policy and the framework. You know, you really had to watch a lot of tape to kind of get to it, so I appreciate your time and your effort into this. And I think that the areas that, that I kind of thought about as, as we were going into discussion around this Measure E is really the, the basic approach we were taking with the E funds, and that is really to take a kind of a portfolio-based approach to how we manage this fund, and for my colleagues here that are in, that are used to managing either foundation funds and everything else, this, this is pretty familiar stuff, but not typical for how we might approach a fund of money coming towards revenue and tax revenue coming from taxpayers to meet specific goals, so we, so we wanted to make sure we captured that, and, and John did capture it by looking at those three categories of, of funds, which is accelerator, programmatic, and venture. This also led to, and again, I don't want to jump too far ahead, because what we tried to do, if you look on page two of the staff report, and how we were able to stack what we anticipated areas that might be in there, one of the, you know, we had to think through as, the mayor and I, I think you might echo this, is how we might apply these funds going forward, and where, and where could we give direction to staff, so they clearly understood what, what our intention was for this, because the, the one that comes to mind is the, is the bike pit trails one. I mean, initially, we thought that's really sort of a capital accelerator one, but it then occurred to us that it's probably, has a secondary use, which is, which Ms. Tuttle's smiling because she knows this is true, you need ongoing O and M enforcement and, and maintenance of those trails, and you got to find funding for that as well. So again, it allows us to kind of really kind of approach each of, each of our priorities in a way that could, could leverage the E funds in, in different ways. It also begs some discussion on, on, on our part, so again, once you, kind of the understanding of the framework, which is in the attachment one, kind of the budget policies, part of what we need to, to think about tonight is some more specificity, maybe, as we kind of narrow down those policy terms- down those policy terms around targets that we might find for, if we want to have a target in mind over the life of this, how much we leverage, use the funds to leverage against. Think about, there's some, they talk about in budget policies transparency, what that means, because I think that was most prevalent about how we can make transparent the process, as well as keep maintaining awareness of staff expenses. So part of the discussion point came around how we're going to account for funding of FTEs, either existing or new, that be part of any programmatic funds or whatever else. And then where some of the other policy anchors might be to help staff, as they come forward, what their processes, we can come, we can provide some guidance on process for coming towards us, where other policies they can leverage against for these funds. So what I mean by policy anchors, so obviously, you know, from, I think the bike ped trails is something we're working on in addition to some of our smart cities, or mobility action plan, or it might be other policy anchors we might be leveraging for this. Some of this is in our, the work we've done on our elderly senior services and plans that we've been working on for the last few months. So again, these are areas that we can kind of, again, continue to lever. So I think it's really, a really, really good framework to start, but it's really incumbent upon us that maybe adds a few more layers down to this. Because staff are the ones are looking to our guidance of how they can implement these, and in a way, so that's very clear to them around how we move forward. So again, those are some of the areas I thought about we could kind of take up tonight.
Yeah, thank you. The, one of the, I think, as we dived into this, and as we, as the staff team, the management team that was working on this did the same, this went on for another, I don't know, 50 or 60 pages of, you know, deeper and deeper and more articulated policies. And it was just too, it was impossible to digest. So this is short in part because there's still a lot happening just in this. But Mr. Ledesma is exactly right. Additional articulation on several of these things, some of which are previewed here. So for example, you know, what our expectations might be about the, how much leverage we might expect from each of these things, that will vary by these categories, but figuring out what that, how you actually lay that on a policy basis. So you would expect that we're not going to spend money on a smart city project unless it leverages a whole lot, because we don't have that much money. And it's not an area of expertise for us. But on, you know, on reducing community impacts of homelessness, that's a different matter. Maybe a smaller leverage target is appropriate, or it's not as key of a criteria as it is on smart cities. So kind of teasing these universal policies out further is one example of the task that would be next in this space, as well as from the bottom up, building particular policies around each of the buckets. And in my mind, that could, that would likely be a different constellation of council subcommittees, as opposed to the one that we have right now, which is working on the overarching. But we might break into smaller, you know, into different pairs for, you know, what's the smart city set of policies within this universal framework, without making it overly, you know, any more complicated than is absolutely required, which it already is. But in order to build those elements out. One of the key challenges I've struggled with about exactly how to do this, because it's so unusual for government, many of these, well, many of the venture categories in particular are intended to be highly opportunistic. And that's not, that is not normally how we do business as a government agency. So, you know, we're used to budgeting on June 30th for July 1st to the next June 30th. And here's what we're going to, here's what we're going to do, here's what we're going to spend. And it's mostly our money. But even if it's not, if it's money that we're going to get for a road project or whatever, the range of potential partners, the funding sources that are available, when they're, when those announcements come out and everything, it's pretty well-known. So we're opportunistic, but in a pretty structured way. But on the, on smart cities, or on, you know, some of the venture elements of homelessness reductions, where we might, we want to both, we want to be available to exploit partnerships and opportunities, funding sources, public-private partnerships, that we couldn't possibly anticipate today. So we want to be able to do that. At the same time, we don't want to end the year having spent nothing, you know, waiting for the perfect opportunity, having done absolutely nothing. And so for Ms. Santine in particular, who's done a lot of this work, either managing, you know, foundation portfolios, or trying to get money out of foundations, from other people's foundation portfolios, this balance of portfolio management around maintaining enough in your fund to be able to be opportunistic during the full course of the two-year budget cycle, while also not always waiting for the very best thing later on, is, I think, it's one of the things on our punch list to build out further. And so I know, when we met, we thought we might need to turn this over to another, at least, you know, turn this over to another council member who's got more deep experience. I've worked in this space too, but around how to apply some of the portfolio management lessons from philanthropy, and from venture philanthropy in particular, to the venture funds especially. That doesn't apply to, you know, bike, to the trails, or to road rehab, or some of those other elements, where we know exactly what it is that we want to do, where we want to get money. But in some of these smaller areas, it's absolutely, it's absolutely relevant. So I think that's, those are two examples of the kinds of areas that we would want to keep teasing out. And if there's, you know, guidance or direction from council tonight, that would be great. If not, you know, we'll all keep working on it together as well. So, but we wanted to get this basic, this basic framework, which shouldn't look unfamiliar to anyone in council, because it's all derived from what we have been providing direction on since last July. But this is, if we had this framework, then the rest of the work that needs to happen, this is a foundation, could get under serious.
Agreed.
Get underway. Mayor Proton, Johansson?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd, one of the, this is good work. Thank you both for, I know it's kind of an amorphous issue when you got into it to begin with. It's very well collapsed at this point. So one of the issues is, you know, you could have situations where you have a crossover between two different categories here. And it could be, I don't know if one of the potential principles reflects that. So, you know, maybe, and we talked about it kind of in the age friendly, that there could be one category that would augment another category. So you basically can, you know, hit multiple areas with one project. It could be maybe one of the principles that you deal with. And in terms of the opportunistic issues, I know that the city's not really historically in the business of that. But, you know, particularly on something like the smart city, and when you're looking at pilot projects, it, you know, there could be some opportunities that can be basically getting in and getting out very inexpensively with a purpose. So you're trying to collect data, you're trying to see if, for example, there's some benefit to rolling this out on a larger scale, that type of thing. So and those would be kind of things that you're not really going to know, you know, a year in advance. It's going to, there could be some city that you find out that it's really got a particular program in place. It seems to be really promising that you want to try, okay, let's try that out, and with a minimal amount of cost, try and at least implement some parts of that. And it may not really be money, it may be just, you know, well, staff time. But there are also maybe grants available to do that type of thing. You know, one, for example, some of the broadband initiatives would be, there's, I know there's grants out there that are available to do partnering with the intercom companies to look at broadband issues. And it may be a way to, you know, I guess, seed some type of grant program with this type of thing. So I think it's good work. Looking forward to expanding on it.
Santine?
I too think it's helpful, as we've gone through this process, to get more, give more guidance, and to try to figure out how to give more guidance to our outstanding and really talented and creative staff team. So I think this is, this is good work. For me, the venture piece is really, is really interesting, how to balance that, and how, what to include or what to exclude. So even for me, I think being more universal in that fund, although I know we need to, I know we need to be targeted, and just to, just so that it's helpful. But there could be a case, for example, where there's some interesting road project, that's like some venture thing that we can't see. And if we put ourselves in a box and say, oh, that can only be a capital accelerator, I just, I just think that's, that's a category where we may want to be kind of more open than perhaps. I do think it's helpful to have the capital accelerator programmatic pieces, kind of to do most of the work. But this venture piece could be a little more wide open, even than it is now. But I, this is super helpful, and I think really good thinking, and great work to move us forward. So I know it's more discussion ahead. Look forward to that.
No comments? You okay, Mr. Robinson? You presented as though you were expecting a 45-minute deep discussion. So I don't want to disappoint you.
I can go get my water if you want to continue. But, yeah, so was the, was the direction then, that we just continue to work with the existing ad hoc committee to refine the?
On the, on the, on the universal, that level, I think, as we, as needed, and as appropriate, you know, we will likely turn to different subcommittees on some of the, some of these elements. We, I don't feel like we need to, just as a matter of consistency, have, you know, whatever, 10 council subcommittees on each one of these things. So we might want to pick one or two of them to begin with, just to, and the venture ones might be, might be, might be ripe for that. Because we don't really have any framework on smart city investments, for example. We have the smart city policy that we've been developing, but that might, but that might be one. Whereas road rehab might, that might wait a little bit while we will focus on the others, so that we're not either taking a lot of management time, or our time splitting into, you know, running and chasing a bunch. So I think that, yeah, for me, at least, the universal policies, the subcommittee could keep working based on some of the work, the excellent work that you've already done, and the conversation that we've had tonight. And then, as appropriate, maybe pick a couple of these where we, where there's a particular need for greater clarity around how the council's envisioning prioritizing and managing some of those funds would be appropriate.
I'd agree. And I think as we go down even the next layer of sort of more specificity and more of that policy work, I think some of this will come out too. So maybe some of the programmatic side becomes fairly easy. Because even in how we articulate, we had discussions around transparency, and what that meant. And included was, you know, staff discussion of how you would come forward with spending plans, which included how many hours of time might be dedicated to this for a staff member, for one of the funds. So some of that might be built in and help answer some of those questions, maybe get, you know, part of this is, I don't, we're trying to guard against getting some of these ones articulated, and also getting the team off to kind of actually use it and put it to work, which, which they can, right? And we want them to. So I don't, I'm kind of guarding against getting too much deeper, and it's enough so we can get started on some of the use of Measure E stuff, and projects we want to see done.
All right.
So we'll work with you some more.
We have provided sufficient direction. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, John.
All right. That brings us to item 15, which is consideration of an approval of a shortlist for advancement in the pilot flexible transportation service procurement process. Mr. And.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Sarah Strand, Assistant Transportation Planner with Public Works. I'm returning to council tonight, per your direction at the last meeting held on July 26th, specifically as it relates to the procurement process for the pilot flexible transportation service. And I'm just going to grab the clicker. So at that meeting, council determined that additional information was required to ensure that adequate policy guidance and input was being provided into this process from both the relevant commissions, as well as City Council. And so I'm here tonight to review the process, give an overview of the 10 proposals that were received in response to the RFP, and to request that council provide feedback and approve a shortlist for staff to proceed with into the evaluation and selection stage of this procurement. I'd like to start by walking through the process that staff intends to follow, unless otherwise directed by council. And I also wanted to mention that this process was vetted with Caltrans staff to ensure compliance with state contracting standards. And that's in light of the recommendation of an award of CMEC funding through the SECOG TDM Innovations Grant Program. And that will actually be voted on tomorrow at the SECOG Board of Directors meeting. So as I mentioned, 10 proposals were submitted to the city in response to the RFP. And following the receipt of those proposals, staff conducted a preliminary screening, just to narrow down that list for advancement. And this preliminary screening was based on the alignment of the proposals with the goals, objectives, and parameters set forth by the RFP, as well as the feedback that you provided to us at the last meeting, which I'm going to review a little bit more shortly. In terms of process, pending council's approval of a shortlist for advancement, an evaluation and selection panel would be convened, consisting of three city staff, a representative from SECOG, as well as a subject matter expert from AC Transit. And that panel would use the evaluation criteria that was included in your staff report as attachment two, to independently score both the written proposal, as well as a supplementary interview. And following the selection process, the top ranking proposal would then be recommended to council for an award of contract in October. At that time, staff will have worked with the top ranking firm to develop multiple service alternatives, along with associated cost estimates. And these alternatives would include a cost comparison across different service models. So that's your curb-to-curb service model versus hub-to-curb, or hub-to-hub, as requested by council at the last meeting, along with a funding plan. So then, council may then elect to award a contract, and select a service model to proceed with at that time, or may direct staff to return with modified or additional service models for further consideration before awarding a contract. And one thing that I'd really like to emphasize is that we're not selecting a detailed service model right now. But we're really just trying to confirm the direction that we're heading in, as we start to narrow that shortlist for evaluation and selection. And once a firm is selected to award a contract to, the service design and planning will really begin. And additional policy considerations will be continually brought back to council for, and the commissions, for additional input and direction. So just for example, on that, things like hours of operation, or vehicle branding, or subsidies, and if we want to subsidize a service to what extent, or even things like incentive pricing, if we wanted to incentivize a service by providing free trips to a certain destination versus others. Those are decisions, the type of thing that we will be coming back to refine. So as I described before, staff conducted a preliminary screening to develop the recommended shortlist. And this was done based upon the goals and objectives of the RFP, as well as those parameters that you helped us to refine a little bit at the last meeting. And specifically, the RFP solicited innovative firms, both public and private, to deploy a one-year, on-demand flexible transportation service that encourages ride sharing, and could actually provide a viable alternative to driving or traditional fixed route service, in an effort to reduce VMT, particularly single occupancy trips, and encourage the use of other alternative modes like bike share and walking. The RFP emphasized that a comprehensive or turnkey proposal that would provide all the components necessary to be able to deploy by spring 2018 was highly desired, as well as having full access and ownership of the data associated with the pilot, in order to gauge the performance of the service, as well as inform the mobility action plan and other strategic planning efforts. And in addition to the RFP, what we heard from council last time was that there's clear direction, the pilot should be deployed citywide, to ensure that it's universally attractive, which would support the viability of residents going car-free, and would ensure that the city is able to study the conditions under which the pilot service is or isn't effective across a variety of use cases. You also emphasized the need to allow the pilot to compete with existing fixed route services, if it happens to do so, in order to learn how or if current ridership may change as a result. And lastly, council asked staff to ensure that the service doesn't simply pay to replace an existing trip. So these were the key parameters that we used to screen the proposals and develop the recommended shortlist. Shown here are the 10 firms that responded to the RFP, categorized generally by their proposal type. Each proposal is also summarized in more detail in attachment one of your staff report. For those proposals that are not being recommended for advancement, a more detailed rationale is also included with the summary. And at this point, I'm just going to go briefly over the 10 proposals, starting with those not being recommended for advancement. So the first one not being recommended for advancement is, it's listed above the technology-only category, which is referring to the firm Trans- category, which is referring to the firm Translok, which did not submit a turnkey solution. They were just offering to provide the onboard technology and the smartphone application that would enable the dynamic routing and real-time booking components of the service, along with some preliminary micro-transit demand analysis. So this isn't really recommended, because the city would have to pursue a lot of additional contracting in order to assemble all the pieces to be able to deploy the pilot. The next category is subsidized ride hailing, which I just quickly want to distinguish from ride sharing. Ride hailing is essentially a technology-enabled taxi service that people can hail a ride using their smartphone in somebody else's car, and it takes them from their destiny, from their origin to their destination directly without any stops along the way. Ride sharing is different in that it seeks to maximize the vehicle occupancy while preserving an acceptable level of service for users in regard to travel time and distance. So the next two proposals not recommended for advancement are Uber and Lyft, who both proposed subsidized ride hailing services, wherein the city would pay to provide free or discounted rides for a specific population, which would be completely at the city's discretion, and would allow the city to incentivize different types of travel behaviors by giving those free or discounted rides to particular places, for example, transit stops or large trip generators. And please note, although Uber and Lyft do have ride sharing services, that I'm sure you're familiar with, Uberpool and Lyftline, those services were not proposed in the RFPs that we received, or in the response to the RFP. And those services are also not available in our region at this time. Based on some limited conversations with both of those companies predating the RFP, we believe that's because it requires a really high population density, and that's also why we think it's, it's only available in a few select cities, such as New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, at this time. So Uber and Lyft, ride hailing services, they are both currently available in the city, just the regular Uber and Lyft, and they are used by many. However, we have some concerns about the VMT production implications of these services, as some early research is indicating that the drivers of the services might actually contribute to a little bit of an uptick in VMT due to the cruising, looking for passengers. In addition, council expressed some concerns about subsidizing service that's already available, so that could be a concern there. And lastly, both firms clearly stated limitations on the data that would be shared with the city, so it could make it difficult to conduct performance monitoring and gather the data desired. Moving on, the green commuter and the free ride are not recommended for advancement and are categorized as limited ride sharing for a couple of reasons. First, Green Commuter is proposing more of a car-share, ride-share hybrid, wherein vehicles would be available for a membership-based electric car-share program, but would be used to provide ride sharing services during peak hours. While this is an innovative idea, due to the requirement of a heavy investment in electric vehicles and EV charging infrastructure, that was included in the proposal, this would be limited in its coverage of the city and would dedicate a significant portion of funds toward these capital acquisitions, which staff believes is not aligned with the scope or budget of the pilot, which is aimed primarily at funding the operations of a transit alternative. The free ride proposed to deploy an on-demand ride sharing service for the Riverfront District using electric gem motorcars, which if you're unfamiliar with, are basically like sleeker, larger, electric golf carts. And while this actually may be a good fit for the Riverfront area, the size of these vehicles would limit service from being expanded to a citywide model, which council also expressed was an important parameter for this service. However, as mentioned in your staff report, the city could consider further exploring one or more of these models that are not being recommended outside of the scope of this pilot, should you express such an interest or direction to do so. So the remaining proposals comprise the staff-recommended shortlist, and these were submitted in no particular order by the firms Chariot, Transdev, RideCo, DemandTrans, and Via. All five of these proposals are relatively similar, to the extent that they are true ride-share services that offer branded vehicles and a smartphone application to book and track rides. Each of the proposals offers some level of customization, but are generally comparable in their approaches, which provide right-sized vehicles on demand and seek to optimize vehicle occupancy through dynamic routing. For more details on each of those five proposals, including some of the key differences, I'm just going to refer you to your attachment one, and I can answer any more specific questions you have at the end of the presentation. So lastly, staff did present this information last night at a special meeting of the TMI Commission to solicit some feedback on the recommended shortlist. Generally, the commissioners' comments were in alignment with the council's direction that the pilot should be universally attractive and should provide a viable alternative to driving. Specifically, the TMI commissioners expressed that a curb-to-curb model would be more likely to incentivize residents to go car-free, and that downtown Sacramento service might further support ridership. Support was also expressed for the use of incentive-based pricing that I mentioned before, and accessibility was the other key piece of feedback. The commission expressed support for ensuring that the service is broadly accessible to ADA, unbanked, and non-smartphone users, and also suggested that we explore translation into other languages. So with that, I'd like to respectfully request that council discuss and approve the staff-recommended shortlist for advancement. Alternatively, if the council believes modifications are necessary to approve the shortlist, then council is requested to do that at this time. That concludes my presentation, and I'll pass it back over for questions.
Mr. Ladesma?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, first, Sarah, thanks for all your work and this team's work on this item as well. This is really coming together really quickly, I think, and you've listened to us very well in terms of what we're looking for as we pursue the RFP, so thank you for all your work and diligence. One of the things that as we, as we, as we went through this a couple of weeks ago, was that last week, I forget, that didn't occur to me as we started to understand the different services that are available, and you start to apply some of the principles we had had around, you know, frankly, I've been walking around and talking about with the technology of Uber and Lyft, because it's the most easily accessible, understandable technology that most people use today. You don't really get a good grasp of other providers that are leveraging technology or other services that are leveraging technology for, for service. And it really started to narrow, at least steer my thinking into, wait, we're not, we're not, maybe they're not approaching this in the right way, which is sort of the discussion we need to have here today, which, to me, I worried about Uber and Lyft. I think Councilmember Sandin brought up, and the, and the last time we met was that, that I would use Uber and Uber already, just to get to the barn or get to Bean and Barrel or occasional dinner downtown, right? So would I, how, am I just cannibalizing a trip the way to take from, it got me off the road, but that's not quite how I think this is, may, may not be the smart use of tax dollars to subsidize in, in some way or another. And then you start to learn actually what they do from your definition of ride hailing to, these are what other services can do, either curb, curb-to-curb or otherwise. So I, I think getting to this point was really helpful for me to understand the dynamics of a, of a still emerging industry, and it may change again. One of the things that, that, that I, I'm interested to hear the rest of the council members talk about is, let me get to micro-transit and, and the shortlist is, is that the concept of what type of service we're envisioning. So the last time we all met, we, we were envisioning, we, we all said citywide, and, and, you know, somebody wants to get to the IKEA or to Walmart from the bright neighborhood, they should be able to. Somebody from bright wants to get down to the Nugget or Target, that they should be available to them, and we shouldn't put limits on certain destinations. I'm kind of curious about how each of these different micro-transits that you provided might be able to do that. I have experience with Chariot, because I've actually seen them in action in San Francisco. Very easy to define and see how they work, you know, just collect people, it stops on demand. But I really don't know a lot about the other one, except for Transdev, when they're proposing something totally different than what we see from them today through YCTD. So again, it's just, it's, it's been a really good process for me, understanding more and more as we drill down more and more about what's possible. It kind of frames better the service that augments what we do today, the fixed line service. So anyway, I just wanted to comment, this has been a really fun journey, to be honest with you, to kind of understand this, this industry a little better.
I guess, I worry a little bit that we are making the same mistake that we made with transit, which is wrapping all of our social policy objectives into a set of minimum standards, and ignoring the signals from actual users, from a broad range of users. So, and what I mean by that is, I mean, the, I mean, the, the Uber and Lyft proposals are examples of pure market, there's, there's no provision of a new shuttle service or some new publicly operated or, or contractually operated thing, whether it's directly by us or by, by a contractor, which is exactly how we're used to delivering transit. You know, either we operate it, another public agency operates, or we contract with a private provider. As I said, we always run transit, and it's how government, you know, normally likes to solve problems, by government doing it or hiring somebody to do it, as opposed to figuring out how to help tune the market to work effectively, which wouldn't be problematic, except the emergence of Uber and Lyft and the, the enormous, you know, usage, which they have, that, which they achieved under conditions that no one would have predicted. I think when we, we actually talked about Uber and Lyft here, when they first emerged, and everyone's like, well, that, that's never going to work. Nobody's going to get in some stranger's car, and nobody's going to pick them up, so that's, that's, that'll be great for millennials, but no one else is going to use it. And that's just not the case. And so to ignore the signal that, that the people are sending by their, those who can afford it, the, the signal that they're sending in massive numbers across, across a variety of demographics for a variety of purposes, is at our folly in order to replicate a, you know, a, just a little bit better shuttle system than we used to operate before. So I just, I want to, I, and, and we do this in some extent, when we say, well, they don't, you know, there's concerns about, about VMT reduction, or maybe they don't have the, the non-smartphone user piece, although as we've heard, smartphones are actually the best access to the internet. Folks who don't have the money to afford smartphones are prioritizing smartphones over eating already, because you can't, it's becoming increasingly difficult to navigate society, period. So building a world, building a whole new transit system with, trying to optimize around folks that don't have access to smartphones, we, you are designing a 20th century, we would be designing a 20th century mobility solution if we ignore the existence of the primary way that people are purchasing, searching, and exercising their mobility options. This is a pilot program. It is not the, the mobility strategy for the city. If it were, that's a different set of considerations, because we have to make sure that every single, you know, everyone in the city is served, but that's not what we're doing here. What we're doing here is trying to test something and to learn from that process. And so the, the danger in, in, you know, in, in programmatic design is to design, if you design always on a universal basis, you run the risk that you design something that no one will end up effectively using, because you will have, you will have insisted on a set of social policy filters that prevent the actual usable solutions from, from emerging. So I'm, I'm flying, I don't actually have a proposal, you know, around how to, how to change this, but I do want to flag it, because I think especially for progressive planners, you know, who, who don't like Uber and Lyft conceptually, and then write it, that we need to, we need to, we need to check ourselves and check our corporate bias and all that stuff, and, and look, okay, but what are, what do people that live here of all stripes actually choose to do when they have the choice? And what they're choosing is point-to-point solutions that are in the, in the private market and don't require a public sector solution. And we should hear that when we're thinking about what, what kinds of things we want to, we want to test. On the other hand, the, the data issues are a real one, since this is a test, and so I get, I can, that, that, that's concerning to me on the Uber and Lyft, that, that, their, their continued resistance to provide any data. And then more, I guess more fundamentally for me, you know, that if, this, those would have been more attractive if they did have some other, not even innovations to them, but just borrowing from some Uber Access or Uberpool or some of the other, some of the other modalities in their system that, that, that might have provided the ability to test some things. But I actually don't, I mean, in the end, if, if we were able to provide significantly subsidized rides, so that the, an Uber ride for most trips for, was as, was as cheap as a bus ride, which is not impossible to imagine, I mean, right now, I'm getting 50% off each of my, my next 10 Uber trips. I take Uber six times a day because of my limited mobility from my shoulder surgery, and could not imagine having to walk to City Hall in order to take each trip from hub to hub. I just would, I would never do it. It's impossible, and I shouldn't have to. If I couldn't afford, you know, some better option, the notion that I would, that because I'm resorting, using the city service, I would need to somehow make my way, you know, eight blocks or 12 blocks or 20 blocks in order to get at a hub service, doesn't make any sense. So I'm conflicted on this, on this space. I would, I would love to have one of those kinds of, a real ride hailing service that progressive social planners hate in the, in the, you know, in the, in the final run, but I'm not sure they would make it in the end for some, for some of those reasons. And some of the others that are purely hub-to-hub, I just don't, I just don't know how that actually works, really, in the, in the real world. And there's a few here that are a mix in terms of trying to do their things, but if, if, if most of them are in the same space, which is hub-to-hub or hub-to-hub with some incentives or policies or whatever to try to move away from, then you, then we're not seeing that much, we don't get that much variation in the final pool, which would be nice to have, you know, a variety, a more, a more variety in the, in the ultimate ones that are, that are out there. So, I don't know, that's, I mean, I think these are, these are, I was impressed with the set of proposals that we got and the range of people that have, that have been that space, but I, I'd hate to just focus on those folks who are acting like small versions of Veolia and, and Transdev and other, other transit providers, but transit providers operating little buses, little shuttles instead of big buses. That's not, that's, that is better than what we have been, than what we have been doing, but that's still not a, that doesn't feel like it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a scalable 21st century solution in that way. So, I don't know, just random comments at this point, but. How about Dr. Sandin, whose dissertation covers this topic?
Well, I think, I think you've done what we asked, which was to understand how to get this, to the shortlist. I think that's, that's actually what we asked you to do and to expand it and share the criteria, and kind of, this is, this is something we don't usually participate in, this kind of part of the process. So it's, it's interesting, Mayor, to hear your comments, because what, what struck me was the concern about accessibility and one of the, one of the groups in your shortlist, there's a kind of no ADA, no non-smartphone, and that kind of popped out at me. But, but then, I mean, you do make a good point about, so if this is a pilot, and more people have smartphones, and we want to be thinking about the future and so forth. I mean, I suppose I could set that aside. It's just, it's just, that's why we're, we're council made up of different kind of opinions and perspectives, so, and then you get to make all the magic for us through the next step. So I, I, I kind of wish we would get this kind of amazing thing that maybe doesn't exist anywhere for us, so I think, again, I don't, I don't know that we're making the, the final decision here. This is, this is the decision about the vetting, so that we can see kind of the shortlist that then will come forward to us. So I'm fine with the, the kind of process. I appreciate the, listening to us and what issues were important to us. I do think we need the data to be able to look, to look back at the, the pilot year and to really understand if we actually are making a difference, if there's something, or, or there may be an innovation that comes from the data and the learning that we have over the course of the year, something that we actually could do better and, and start here. So we may be able to go, after a pilot year, go to perhaps another company, and things will continue, I think, to, to change and innovate over time, and actually say, this is specifically, given the data we've learned, this is what we, we want you to build for us. And this, that's not what this is. So, but thank you for, thank you for the open process.
Mayor President Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, the, I think I had a question just on the weighting. So when you look at this, I think the weighting should somewhat correlate to our goals of what we're trying to achieve. So VMT is obviously a priority, and you've mentioned some research that maybe some of these technologies don't really, they actually don't help VMT because of the cruising that goes on with finding riders. But when you look at something like this, and say you want to look at it lens through, say, aging or some age policy, so what would that look like on, when you're looking at criteria and weighting? Well, you know, one of the things would be, you would want to, if you're trying to target a certain population, you want to try to see what the organizations do would maybe help to increase ridership in that particular target, market. So that may be, you know, maybe their thoughts on ridership awareness, training, how they would accommodate age and- would accommodate age and ability issue, and you noted one of the ones that, I think, one of the council members, one of the ones that doesn't refer to ADA at all. But, you know, a lot of what we've seen, particularly if you look at people who don't use these types of services, who don't use buses, is they're kind of afraid to use it, and they need these people to train them to go and walk on the bus and figure out how to use it. And it's going to be the same thing with these rideshare's. I mean, you know, you mentioned, the mayor mentioned that people in general don't like to get into strange cars. Well, there is still a segment of population that doesn't like to get in strange cars. And, but, they need to have some type of training that it's okay. That's what you can do now. So, some type of thought that some of these organizations may have with that particular, I think it's a particular goal of this, is to kind of help the transportation of folks who don't have it. That was one of the points of this survey that we just did, on, you know, what are the barriers to transportation? Do you have an extra car? Is it always broken down? You know, that whole thing. And so, you want to try and find a way to target that group. And then, we can talk about subsidies or whatever to, you know, if there's an income barrier on that, but that's, you know, I'd like to kind of see that. I'm not sure if it would rise to a level of a weight, but you probably have some narrative at some point on some of these, you know, like a question is, "How would you accommodate, you know, ridership, increasing ridership of this particular targeted population," something like that. So, you at least get some thought, because obviously, these companies are in the business of doing this. They talk to people, they talk to companies that are in the business. This whole issue is a growing issue in this country, so we may have some good information on possibly how we tackle that issue through input, through this process.
Can I add a few more comments?
Sure.
I think one of the, one of the things, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor, around how we kind of view this approach, right? Because I think it is, I think we do have to shake ourselves up a little bit to see, are we really challenging ourselves to how users might use, might be attracted to a certain mode of transit, right? And having that available to them, and let that speak for itself. And the thing that I'm shaking my, in this process, is we should be moving forward in a way, because kind of my question was, well, maybe, there might be a couple of modes out of these users that we might turn to. The chariot might make more sense in a Southport environment, where they're collecting people to get to a hub. It may, I don't know. In addition to, there might be users in Southport who need to curb the curb to get somewhere else. So, you know, I think what's presented us is just kind of based on that first initial start, but that doesn't mean, I don't think it means, from our standpoint, that we can stop there, right? Because part of, as we started this initiative, we had said that as the city gets into sort of the transit, for lack of a better, the transit business, that we know we have kind of fixed route bus service covered, and we were moving towards what other modes, whether through a streetcar or through bike share, because two other modes. This is, something in here is another mode that, based on sort of the criteria you heard from us in terms of what we're trying to achieve, could be one. But that doesn't, to my mind, I think I asked the question, that doesn't stop us from still maybe doing another RFP and doing Lyft or Uber. They, frankly, I'm, I was waiting for our two tech innovation members of the council to really jump up and down. They won't give us our data. That's, to me, I was, I didn't think that would get past your guys' more than two seconds of, they're not going to let us have the data. And so, again, from my perspective, this doesn't mean we do this and we stop, because we, and I want to guard us, if even from the paradigm of, you know, I get your thinking totally, that let's not try to make, you know, cater this to the lowest common denominator that nobody uses it, right? I think that's a little bit of what you're suggesting, to guard ourselves from. But I also don't want to be, let the best be the enemy of the good. We just need to be, get something started and see how it goes, and find that one case where, yeah, that does work. And then being freed, because that's the business we're getting into, is maybe there's another mode. And granted, I know we're talking about dollars and time and everything else, but it shouldn't stop us from that thinking. So, that was a little bit of a thought process I had before we sort of settled in, I got to make one of these decisions, you know, we're going to get them on the process, or one of these we picked, and we got to live with it, well, a little bit, it's a pilot, and so, we'll end it at some point and learn, but we can say, and find, we could find possibly another opportunity to kind of further another pilot, or use some other method to kind of get an Uber or Lyft or some other transit provider to come fill in other gaps. Anyway, so that's just a thought I wanted to pose to the council as well.
Ms. Roscoe.
Thank you. I mean, I don't know if I have anything profound to add to this conversation, but I sit here conflicted, thinking about all the possibilities. And when I relocated back from the east coast back to Sacramento, I took a bus from Meadowview to the Capitol every day, and the one things that I relied upon were the fact that it was predictable, and it was transparent, it was easy to use, and I knew it was going to come, no matter what. I didn't have to do anything but stand at a bus stop, or at least get to the bus stop. And the complexity is, you know, and this argument is, you know, I can't wrap my head around this one model user. There's a lot of different types of users. There are people that are going from Meadowview to the Capitol because they're going to work. Then there are other people who can't, they don't have a car, and they don't have a bicycle, so they're reliant on the bus, and maybe those people, maybe they do have a smartphone, maybe they don't. But there are people who don't speak English that need to get their kids to, you know, a doctor's appointment, and the only method of transportation that they can safely rely upon is the bus. So, maybe I'm archaic in my thinking, I'm not as far ahead as far as transportation, but, you know, I, when I envisioned the model in my head, I just thought it was something that was going to be easier on our roads, and easier on our environment, and maximize the amount of users that were used in one car, so, or vehicle, I should say. So, when I saw Uber and Lyft, the first thing I thought was, ah, that doesn't do it for me, because it essentially could supplant the, what's already happening, and then it doesn't do anything for the environment. That's just, that's just changing my car for you driving me to where I need to go. But at the same time, to, after, you know, I've been thinking about this and processing this, I think that there, a hybrid or a whatever, a tri-brid, if that's, lack of a better term, you know, there might be some type of mix, where you have something like an Uber or Lyft that gets you to a hub, but then you rely upon another method of transportation, so that way, it's not abused, and people are just getting free rides on behalf of the city to where they think they want to go at that particular time. But then, there's other people who know they can count on, you know, something more predictable and a little bit more visible and user-friendly, because I, you know, I think that the branding, like, you know, you see an RT bus, you have certain expectations of what you're going to get. And if, you know, someone drove up in a car, I think that even, I feel that I'm in the, you know, 21st century, and I know how to use, you know, my smartphone for a variety of different ways, but I think that my distrust of a system that's foreign to me, even with education, might cause me to rely on my car to get me where I know I'm going to be, because it's just something that's routine and predictable. So, I mean, just to condense those thoughts, I think there is value in looking at, you know, a variety of different, not just maybe one method, but more than one.
There has to be, right? I mean, the, it's part of my concern, is that the set that we have are mostly all in a very similar lane. And it, I mean, the challenge with our existing transit system is the same challenge, I'm a community college, and like Councilmember Sandin, but we both worked in that sector, but it's the same challenge, which is, we've designed, we've designed a transit system that is supposedly universal, and we've bought buses with the expectation that it will be universal. If we can just market a little bit better, or just charge more for parking, or provide $5 extra of a subsidy or whatever, then people will get on this bus. But they don't get on the bus, because we've designed the bus system with these filters. Okay, it must serve every, you know, the most vulnerable in society, whose time we don't value, so it's fine if the bus ride takes an hour and a half to go one mile. And then, we're surprised when people who have alternatives won't ride it, like, almost everyone will not ride the bus, despite all of our best efforts. And almost everywhere in the country, there's not a unique to us, I mean, other than a handful of cities. And so, my one admonition is, we cannot keep making this mistake of thinking that we are serving, because then, the community college system's totally underfunded, because that's only where, that's only where you go if you can't go to the university. That's for other people's kids. The bus system is for other people to ride, so that they're not taking up space on the highway, so I don't have any traffic. That's how, that's how middle-class America thinks about buses and community colleges both. And it's a fundamental design problem for us, when we design it as though it's only, it's primarily, it's for everyone, but designed for those with the most challenges. And you, and so, when you ignore the existence of smartphones, then folks who have smartphones will not use the system. They vote with their phones already, that they are choosing in overwhelming numbers options that allow them to use their smartphones, including folks that don't speak English, because it's way easier to get on a smartphone, if you have one, and get a ride if you only speak Vietnamese, than it is to talk to a YOLO bus driver about, "What's the fare? Where does this bus go?" And so, the technology is actually the equalizer in that case, and has much more potential if we keep investing in them and using the kind of policies that council's been talking heavily about in terms of broadband access and better, you know, 5G, 4G access and what have you. Those are essential to building out an equitable society, not running away from the tools that middle-class people use, and not designing systems around what middle-class people use, but designing for them specifically, and then making sure that more people have access to those tools, I think is really, really critical. And so, the approach of nudging the market, to me, is a valuable one to have in a set. And again, the data one is a problem, is definitely a problem for me, but I just don't want to lose this while we look at a bunch of options that even for smartphone users require, okay, now I'm going to have to, in addition to Uber and Lyft, I'm going to have a TransDev app on my phone. Are people, and that's ride-sharing, not ride-hailing, and it's, I forget what you said, but it'll be the, you know, they'll figure out what, how much delay I will tolerate in order to do that. That's an extraordinary, I mean, that is a narrow section of the market. One of the reasons why Uber Pool does not exist everywhere is that a lot of people don't, aren't willing to do that already. I mean, and the segment, the market segment on that is pretty age-specific, of people who are willing to hop on Uber Pool as opposed to Uber, regular Uber. So, I just, the notion that people are going to, in any sort of scale in our community, sign up for a whole new ride-sharing service is possible, which is the point of a pilot, for sure, but if all the options are basically in that same lane of a shuttle bus or a ride, or forced ride-sharing essentially, then we're not really giving ourselves much of a menu of options to test, because everything, all the test options are awfully similar. So, we're not picking anything tonight, so we don't need to reach any, we're just providing feedback to your team. And it, this is the point, I think this is the point where we're meeting, where we say, "Do you have sufficient direction?" And you say, "Yes."
I would just want to get clear confirmation that you're comfortable with us moving forward with the recommended shortlist, or if there's any modifications to be made to it for us to be able to move forward.
I'm not sure I'm clear, based on councils. So, not that the lady, you standing up there somewhere. So, part of the, if you could put the lesser criteria you heard from us back on this one, one of the slides. Sorry, it wasn't on. And I think this is where it might help you, because what I'm hearing from the mayor and others is a little bit around, we did try to find the things we wanted to apply to the thinking of the shortlist, right? Your recommended shortlist is what you heard. So, the RFP goals, dynamic on-demand, reduce VMT. So, part of the criteria, what I don't see on there is, our input was around, there is ownership of pilot data, so that was a requirement on our end. If that's not important to us, that's what kicked the right, kicked Uber, Lyft out of that, and, you know, how do we not just replace existing rights? So, I'm not trying to cater to, I'm being careful about what we're saying, but it just helps restack the thinking and what we're looking for, in terms of how you approach it, because I might bring more in or might kick some out. So, that's what I'm hearing from you. If we're, to me, owning, getting the data is, we got to know where people are using it from and to, and that's part of what we want to learn. Do we get, I'm just trying to get a sense of, how would we get that otherwise, if, for some of these firms? I mean, everybody else would provide the data, correct?
Yeah, so, the five firms that we're recommending for advancement, they have much more available dataset, they have included in their proposal conversations of different reporting and analysis tools, dashboards that would be available to staff, that type of thing. And then, there's a couple-
I anticipate a Mayor Protem Johansson question, would any of those agreements preclude the population of our open data portal with that same data?
I'm sorry?
The, you mentioned that the data would be available to us for dashboard and analysis and planning and policy, but would the data also, would be, would we be permitted, or would they directly be posting that data, or at least major swaths of it, to the, to our city's open data portal?
I, that's something I would have to look back into. We didn't crest that specific question in the proposals.
It's come up once or twice, so, no, it isn't. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Desmond.
No, I think this is, I think we just need, from my perspective, if I'm sitting in her chair, I'm not sure what we're directing her to do. We can, we could go forward with the five recommended on your shortlist. And, you know, if, what would, I'm just trying to get to a point where-
Right. So, I'm comfortable with moving ahead with the five, but within, as you're going forward to the next, to the next screening, the kinds of, at least for me, the kinds of admonitions about not replicating the transit mistakes around not, not running away from private sector, private-led solutions, and not, I mean, not, as we're, as you're getting from five to one, or whatever the recommendation is, is to take those issues seriously. And VMT, we should be focusing on, because it's the source, it's CMAC money, so we have no choice. If it wasn't, that would not be a top priority for me. Mobility is much more important than VMT at the moment, but I get it, and we got, we, you know, this process has been so good that we won the Secog money even without having done anything yet, so it's, or we will tomorrow, just because they're that confident in the work that's been done up to this point. But as we're, as we're getting, as we're driving down to the end, I've been pushing, you know, pushing hard and getting as much as we possibly can out of our traditional transit and transportation planning mindsets, I think would be helpful.
Okay. All right. Now, do you have sufficient direction?
I believe I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Good work.
All right, thanks. All right, item 16 is an update on the 2017 Mayor's Challenge application process. Mr. Robinson?
Logan, as the council is aware, the Mayor's Challenge is a nationwide competition sponsored by Bloomberg Philanthropies to encourage cities to develop solutions to the nation's most pressing problems. The city participated when the Mayor's Challenge was first held in 2012. In recent years, entries were limited to Europe and Latin America, but this year's competition, again, is focused on the United States, and the city has been invited to participate. The grand prize is $5 million, and there are also four $1 million prizes and 35 $100,000 prizes. The city's on an aggressive timetable to develop a strong application by the submittal deadline of October 20th. Ideas are being solicited from staff, city officials, and residents via an online survey, and as described in your staff report, there will also be multiple ideation events where the most promising ideas will be presented and refined. In addition to this evening's meeting, the council will also have two more opportunities to weigh in on the Mayor's Challenge submittal. September 20th, we're planning a workshop to discuss progress to date, and then, on October 4th, the council will have the opportunity to review kind of the final concept that's being ready for the, being readied for the submittal. Again, staff will finalize that and submit the city's application by October 20th. Our focus is on submitting a winning application, but it's important to note that this exercise has value regardless of whether the city wins. Many of the ideas- Many of the ideas that get submitted may not be ideal for this particular contest, but we're confident that they'll, they'll be good ideas that can be implemented and have a substantial impact locally. Also, the effort supports the city's innovation culture and reminds residents that the city is always striving to provide better service. So we're moving fast, but we're, we're looking forward to this process, and we're looking forward to the next update for the council in September. That's the end of the presentation.
Any questions for John?
And the, just for council's calendaring purposes, we have this on August 25th, right? August 25th, we'll have a changemaker meeting and Innovation Fest or style session on that, and then we have an accelerator workshop with, on September 19th, that the Bloomberg folks are facilitating. They're sending out technical assistants to work with us. If members of the council wish to participate in either one of those, will want to, you know, make sure we're compliant with the Brown Act, but otherwise let, you know, let, let John know, because obviously, city issues will be discussed at these, these sessions, because the purpose is to, is to cook up creative ideas for the city. I've also visited with, I think, all but one of the city's commissions to brief them and engage their, their ideas. And last week, we held a meeting with the chairs and the vice chairs of each of the city commissions, along with the department directors and the senior management team about this as well. So I also want to acknowledge John and the city manager and the, the whole team who've been, this is, this is a really rapid process in order for us to, to do this, and if, and there's no point in doing it if we're not going to do it well. And, you know, so a lot of efforts going into, into, into pulling this off and doing, and doing a great job, so, thanks.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, so in terms of the ideas, what, what kind of ideas are coming out that we're seeing so far?
Are there, are there any?
Yeah, I've actually, we, I, I do have the ability to peek into the, the survey instrument, and there's, there's some really interesting ones coming from the community. There've been some that are reminiscent of ideas that were submitted in 2012 around potentially helping to feed underprivileged people with food that comes out of people's backyard trees, and having an organized mechanism for doing that. There've been ideas about how, age-friendly ideas, about how to help seniors with volunteer efforts. So there's, there's some really interesting ideas that have been submitted, and I've talked to a number of different staff people and actually community members who say they're working on ideas as well.
So when, when they're looking at coming up with, with some type of ideas, or like a, a need that's to be addressed, are we, are we specific as to need? Like, for example, you know, people have full fruit trees and it's creating a mess, we need to do something about it, or something along that line? So there's actually, there's actually a need for this type of widespread, because I think what the, the purpose of this program is for widespread distribution.
Yeah, there's, there's, you know, at the Mayor's Direction, there's, there's some pretty specific guidance in the survey instrument itself around kind of focusing people on priority ideas. And one of the outcomes from the charrette, from the leadership charrette that was held, was that the, the folks there really seemed to be centering in on Measure E-type categories. So that's, you know, the, the categories that we're suggesting in the survey instrument kind of use that, use that guidance to try and focus people on those kinds of priorities, which, you know, the voters have already indicated are important in the community.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, with the addition of, I think, two, two, two other categories, one of which was around improving city effectiveness and efficiency, and the other, I can't remember, but they're, but they were both in the, in the improving city government and customer service and what have you as well, so, in those two lanes. All right. Terrific. Thanks. Thank you.
Good work. Mayor?
Just housekeeping item on, if we could go back to item 15, Sarah appreciated all the input, but the action item was for the council to approve a shortlist of candidates.
All right. Is there, Mr. Lidesman?
I'll make the recommended action.
Second, my member President Joe Henderson, the recommended action. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. All right, now to council calendar. Ms. Burley.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Couple of events that are coming up on this Friday is the West Sacramento Fire Department graduation ceremony in Academy Class 17-1. It's going to be at the Crest Theater in Sacramento, and that's at 6 o'clock. There's also a typo, the special West Africa meeting will be on August 23rd, which is a Wednesday, it says Thursday on the council calendar. And as the mayor mentioned, there'll be the August 25th changemaker meeting, that'll be next Friday. And then coming up way later in September, on September 27th, is the YED Fall 2017, which is the YOLO leaders, they now call it YED. The topic is cannabis regulation. It actually sounds pretty interesting. There's going to be speakers from various stakeholders in cannabis, including Lori Ajax from the State Bureau of Cannabis Control, and Joe Devlin from the City of Sacramento Cannabis Office. So that will be Ian Davis at 4 o'clock on Wednesday, September 27th. Thank you.
All right, thanks for always trying to get us to go to YOLO leaders, no matter, no matter our actual empirical attendance. Ms. Sandine?
The, the Water Resources Association and the YOLO Sub Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency meetings is on September 18th. I know there's a bunch of water, there's also the Regional Water Authority, it's like all the water meetings are around the same time, but both of those agencies are meeting on September 18th.
Any other, any other questions or comments on the calendar? City manager report?
No report.
City attorney report? Staff direction from members of the council? We have no future agenda item requests. So Mayor President Joe Henderson moves, and Ms. Sandine seconds, if the meeting be adjourned, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.